Thank you, Madam Mayor, I will report out on the closed session. The City Council went in a closed session at 5:15. All five members were present.
They discussed the matter of the city manager's evaluation. No reportable action was thereafter taken. The meeting concluded at about 10 to 6:00, and I have nothing further.
The meeting will now come to order. San Juan Batista, January 21st. Pledge of allegiance. Mr. De Vries, can you read this in the pledge of allegiance?
Hello. Ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, in the midst of all with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call. Mayor Edge?
Here.
Vice Mayor Jordan?
Here.
Councilmember De Vries?
Here.
Councilmember Flores?
Here.
Councilmember Freeman?
Here.
A former is present.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to take a moment of silence for recognizing Tony Bach, who some of you may have known. He passed away a week ago Monday. And Tony was a former councilman, mayor. He worked for the board for the cemetery. And he and his wife Amy lived here for several years. They moved here in the late '70s. And Tony was a jack-of-all-trades. He was known to have been a mechanic. He was in real estate. He did real estate loans. And like I said, he was very active in our community. And he was a former councilman. And we'll take a minute just to think about him and our sympathies to his family. Okay. So we go on now to public comment. If anybody has something to say, it has to be anything that is not on the agenda. You'll have three minutes to speak. And I'm sure, okay, Laura will call upon you. Do we have? Sherri Keo, would you come?
Hi. We just recently purchased a property at the Rancho Vista. And we haven't moved in yet, but then we noticed the water drainage issue. The developer doesn't seem to be think through how the water drain to the public sewage system. So it kind of short of the sidewalk. It, the drainage ended in front of the sidewalk. So all the debris washed off through the sidewalk into the public space and then to the drain. So there's a lot of moches and gardening yard, gardening ways just kind of wash to the sidewalk. So it's not a very good design. So I don't know whether anything that the city official can do to correct the issue. So for the future, because it's going to be a lot of blockage into the public sewage system. That was just, that was it.
Yeah. Have you talked to the developers?
Yes, we talked to the developer. They say that's what the city's being approved. It's okay. They cannot do anything about it. And I say, we had a place 30 years ago in San Jose, they already think through. The water drainage is going directly under the sidewalk into the, into the street. So, and I'm surprised that they didn't think through how they designed the drainage.
So did they say they're not responsible or?
They didn't say they're going to fix it. They just kind of say, it is what it is. So I thought, well, there must be something when they do the city planning or something they can, since they still have the construction going, they could just kind of bore through the driveway, extend the pipe.
So we can have the city engineer follow up?
Yeah, so during the rainy season, you can probably have some city people, work crew, to take a look. Because right now, it's a lot of the moach just wash off.
Ma'am, you said you just, you just moved here?
Well, we lived in San Juan Canyon Road. And we just recently purchased one of the units in Rancho Vista. So we haven't moved in, but we've been going there daily to look at what needs to be done. And then that's how we noticed.
Okay.
A lot of the new owner complained, because once it rained, all the debris and washed to the sidewalk, the cement sidewalk. So it's kind of hazard to the pedestrian and also blocking the public system.
Did you want to say something else?
Oh, no, we'll have the city engineer follow up and we'll get back to you.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me. Do you know where she was talking about? It's by the park. Going across the sidewalk there, between the two settling ponds.
If I could ask the city, did you leave your contact information with Laura? Okay, that's perfect. Thank you, perfect.
Anybody else? Is that it?
I don't have any other cards for item number two.
Okay. So then now we'll move on to the consent items. All matters listed under the consent agenda may be enacted by one motion authorizing actions indicated for this, for those items so designated. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless requested by a member of the city council, a staff member, or a citizen. So we're going to go through these items. Approve the affidavit of posting agenda. Approve affidavit of posting public hearing notice. Approve minutes of the regular meeting of December 17th, 2019. Wave reading of ordinances and resolutions on tonight's agenda beyond title. Approve resolution of authorizing street closure for Fiesta Run.
You missed D.
I did.
Yes.
Wave reading of ordinances and resolutions on tonight's agenda beyond title.
D.
Adopt ordinance 20.
D?
Yes, item D.
Oh, that is.
You didn't read it.
Is it wrong? Do I have a different agenda?
We have a different agenda.
Oh my. No wonder I missed it. It's, so adopt ordinance?
2021.
I got, I gave her mine.
Okay, so adopt ordinance 2020-01 to rescind cannabis dispensary ban ordinance.
So I moved to, Madam Mayor, I moved to approve the item three, the consented agenda.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any comments, discussions?
I have questions on the.
Then you should have asked for it to be pulled.
I'm sorry?
She should have asked for it to be pulled if she had wanted to discuss it, the way we work it.
And Councilmember Jordan, do you wish one of those things to be pulled for further discussion?
I would like to pull the resolution authorizing street closure for the Hollister Rotary Mission Run for discussion.
Okay, then Madam Mayor, I meant my motion to approve the consent agenda. Items A, B, C, D, N, E.
Okay.
And pull F. Pass the rest.
Okay, so, all right, okay, good. So now, excuse me, so do we discuss, now we'll discuss?
We didn't mean to.
Oh.
First, then discuss all, one that was voted on A through A.
So, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, so now we can talk about the approved F.
Just a quick question on vendors and food and alcohol. It's too big a term. Do we have any, are there going to be vendors? And is there going to be food?
Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor Jordan, Todd Kennedy, your city planner. Item F right here for the street closure for the Rotary Run, that's the one. Ma'am, the only vendor that's going to be there is just a serving of ice drinks, water, and that's about it. Nothing more. This is based on discussion between me and the applicant. And, you know, right now, we already got it through the process.
Thank you. Thank you, Todd.
So now, so we, now we have to vote on F.
So approve resolution authorizing street closure for Hollister Rotary Mission Run.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution for authorizing the run.
I second that. Oh, wait a minute. I'm a member of Rotary.
That's wrong, Rotary.
But not the Hollister Rotary.
It's Hollister.
You're okay. Okay, good.
Do we have discussion? Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Hey, I don't know either.
Okay, number four. Presentations, informal items, and reports. So that's for A. Presidential primary presentation by Angela Curo, San Benito County Registrar of Voters.
Good afternoon. Actually, Angela Curo apologizes, she will not be able to come. My name is Francisco Diaz, and I'm the staff analyst for the county. And I'm here on her behalf. Fortunately, she's a little bit under the weather and still recovering.
Oh, too bad.
So councilmen and women and mayor, also members of the public, want to thank you for giving me an opportunity to talk to you here today. We're doing a little bit of a roadshow right now in the county. And we're going to the various cities, special districts, schools, and anybody that's really willing to listen to us to provide some information and updates of upcoming changes that are going to happen next year. As I'm sure everyone here is aware, next year, we haven't, oh, actually, I got to rephrase that. This year, this year, I'm still in 2019, thank you. But this year, we have an election. I should know that, right? Out of all people. But yeah, this year, we have an election. So we want to make sure that everyone has the most up-to-date information about changes that are going to happen. Now, I understand I only have a couple minutes to talk to you here today, but I will leave my business cards in the back. And everyone's welcome to give us a call. We're more than happy to talk to you in great detail and answer any questions you have about the election. Today, really, I'm going to be talking about three topics. One is the presidential primary date, which now is on March 3rd. It used to be in June, but now it's in March. Second part I'm going to talk to you about is why political party matters. And registering to vote, or how and when to re-register to vote. Now, as you can see here today, now we have what's called Super Tuesday. That's going to happen on March 3rd, which is the primary. And all the states are colored in blue, are highlighted in blue, which I must say, disclosure, it's not a prediction of how the election. I did not choose the colors. We're just trying to show you that all these, it's purple, thank you. But what's purple just shows that all these states are all going to have their presidential primary on this date. So on election night, it's going to be quite eventful, because we're going to have a lot of results that are going to be playing out. Now, why does political party matter in 2020, this year? Well, generally, in California, we have what's called a top-two primary. And I'm sure everyone's familiar with this. Whenever you get your ballot, if you look at congressional race or senate race, you'll see that you'll have anywhere between 10 to 30 candidates. And they're from all various political parties. You can have Democrats, Republicans, Green, Peace and Freedom, or no party preference. Well, generally, in California, your political party affiliation doesn't really matter in terms of what candidates appear on your ballot. However, when it comes to a presidential primary, that's not the case. And this is really why we're out here trying to inform the public, so they know what's going to happen. For the presidential election, you must be registered with that party that you want to vote for the presidential candidate. So if you want to vote for a Republican candidate, you must be registered with the Republican Party. Democrat, Peace and Freedom, and so on. However, this is where it gets a little bit confusing. If you're a no-party-preference voter, meaning that you chose not to be affiliated with any political party, you have two options. One, you can re-register to vote, or you can cross over. What that means, that there's three political parties that allow you to receive one of their ballots. That's the Democratic Party, the Libertarian Party, and American Independent. If you want to vote for one of the other parties, you have to re-register. This is really why we're out here right now and trying to inform the public. This is even more important, because right now, we're in the process of doing our extracts. These are the extracts that we're beginning mailing out to the printers, telling them which voters are going to receive which ballots. For most of you here in the county, should have received one of these two postcards. They were almost identical, but these postcards differentiate in that one of them is for no political party. These are for people that are registered without a political party, because they chose it not to be affiliated. Or they're registered with the political party that's not qualified. There are very small political parties in the state of California that are trying to become a qualified party. Like the Pirate Party, the We Love Women Party, Conservative Party. And if you're registered with one of those parties, you will receive one of these postcards letting you know what your options are for this election. The other postcard went to everyone else that's registered with the political party. And this one's really just an affirmation that this is the party that you're registered with, and these, and this is the mailing address that we have on file for you. And for whatever reason, you want to change that information, we're asking, we're giving you the information how to do so. Up to right, up to this point, I believe we received about 11% back. So we're truly trying to get out the word out there, especially because it's costly for the county to send one or two or three ballots if you decide to change your mind later on. One of the other things that we're talking to the public about is when to re-register. If you register recently, there's no need to re-register to vote. And we're really trying to encourage the public to remember, snap. If you change your signature, if your name has changed, your address, or your political party, then there's a need to re-register. If you haven't done any of these things, there's no need for you to re-register. Now, why would we, as an elections department, want to encourage the public not to re-register? Because it creates additional duplicate information and additional workload as well. So just once again, snap. Your signature changes, your name, your address, or your political party. If any of these things or events change in your life, you can re-register to vote, or we encourage you to do so. Now, every presentation that we're doing right now, we're just encouraging the public to remember that the census is going to happen shortly. The census is extremely important event that takes place every 10 years. Not only does it affect cities or small jurisdictions or counties, it also affects the elections department. Because we use this data in order to redistrict boundary lines, and we highly encourage everyone to get involved. Now, unfortunately, Renee Archatta also apologizes for not being here today. He was going to do a quick presentation about GIS. And this is a service that's available to the public for free, that we're trying to help them promote, because a lot of the public doesn't know. And what he does is basically, he analyzes data in various layers and puts it together, and it's able to give you a demographic, economical, geographical view of a location. For example, do you want to look at San Juan Batista and see where the water boundary lines are on top of political boundary lines? You can get that information from him. You want to see the registration with school boundary lines, any type of boundary layers that you can think about? He has access to this information, and it's all public record. This is especially useful when cities or counties or jurisdictions are thinking of redistricting. This is extremely helpful information that you can use. If anybody that's thinking of running for office, any cities or jurisdictions that might be interested in maps that are up-to-date and current with all available data and information, he can provide any of these information, once again, free of cost. Here's just more examples of the various types of data. It can also include boundary lines, anything you can imagine. Now, up here is the website, also has various information about how to register to vote, and the website for the county GIS. And that's all I have. Anybody have any questions?
I don't have any.
Yes, it does. I did get a map from him, from Renee.
Well, with that, I'll say thank you. Thank you for having me today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so now we move on. Monthly financial statements.
Thank you, Mayor Edge, members of the city council. We have on this agenda our mid-year budget adjustments and mid-year budget review. So I won't spend too much time here. We have no new abnormalities to speak of. When I say new, meaning that footnote B is definitely over budget expenditures for our affordable housing fund, and those went to pay for the update of our housing element, which has been completed. So that's the good news. On the revenue side, we have several that are exceeding expectations, mostly related to development impact fees. So those will taper off as our developments slow down. But otherwise, there are no serious abnormalities to address in this report. I'm happy to answer any questions the council may have.
Does anybody have any questions? No questions? Okay. No? Okay. So we go on to city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor Edge. City councils, you've received a rather brief report. And I would say brief because of the holidays. Not quite as busy during the holiday season, and staff enjoyed a little bit of time off. So we appreciate that. Very much appreciated. In general, this was my opportunity, while it was quiet here, to learn and study the budget inside and out. And it gives me a great deal of comfort to report to you later in the agenda that I think we're doing pretty well, holding the line in expenses. So that is the second bullet. With our staffing, our planning and public works functions are stable at the mid-year. And we still have the vacancy from our accounts payable position, which has been filled on a contract basis. And Laura sent, our former accounts payable clerk is continuing to help us on a contractual basis with our website update and communications with our, with social media, et cetera. So we're holding our own in that regard, too. We have the cannabis back before you tonight. And we still have one more 30-day period to wait until cannabis becomes a viable program in our city. We can begin accepting applications if that measure was just approved, so I can say within 30 days from now. The planning staff has spent a lot of time on the Casa Rosa, which is on tonight's agenda, so there's no reason to talk about that. In Public Works, we're wrapping up a Third Street reconstruction design, and we hope to be out to bid in the spring. That's been a terrific accomplishment, and hope to get that under construction before the new year, July 1. And with general nuts and bolts with our public works crew doing a dynamite job, I wanted to congratulate them for hanging the pink halos on Third Street this past week. And the San Juan Committee, and Heidi, and other members who have made that pretty in pink for the holiday. We got our street sweeper back deployed today, and already have complaints about how it could run better, so that's good. I was on the street. Can always do a better job sweeping the streets. So with that, we hosted the League of California Cities Dinner. We had probably 45, I think, elected officials here at Hardinas, and had a really good night. Learned more about elections at that. And thank you to Sessar for having El Teatro de Campesina present, and Noé Montoya played for us. It was great representation of our city for the whole region. So that was, that was a really good thing. And with that, I'll leave it, leave it be. Thank you, Mayor.
Does anyone have any questions?
I have one question. Don, you said, under cannabis, I have not yet come across a solution for modifying the city's ordinance with regard to the foundation issue. I take it right, the SLAB versus?
Yes, I.
etc. And then you say, so therefore, I recommend that we just wait?
Well, rather than proposing to amend that ordinance, we can allow the program to go into effect while we look for a solution to that problem. So I've talked to the city engineer, and I've talked to the building official, and I just have not come up with exactly what you're looking for as far as a design. We talked in a discussion action item at our last council meeting of the possibility of having each developer come forward with a plan to a solution for the floor of their cannabis cultivation facility. And that seemed to be unacceptable. So right now, I just kind of have the hold button, and I'm looking for suggestions and solutions as I also look out in the field. But I've looked at maybe 10 different city ordinances and haven't come up with that. I'm not finding an ordinance with that amount of detail in it, frankly.
I can cross, actually.
Yeah, it's just not, that's more something that you would find in a building official's handbook as a standard, or development standard. It's not something that I'm finding in an ordinance, per se. It's just beyond the level of detail. So whether we want to rethink that, I'm happy to do that, but so I'm not proposing any changes at this time. And instead, going forward with what we have until we can come up with the right change.
Going forward with what we have until we get, I think you said, we may, we may wait until the application process begins in February, and then take it on a, at a case-by-case basis?
That's another way to go about it.
Any other questions?
I have a couple, please. In Public Works, the work at well five and six is being completed. What do we have left with that?
There's some details that we put on hold while we address the concerns of the water board to get our filtration system up and running. And those include completing the electrical hookups at well five for the telemetry system, and getting all of our telemetry in place so that we can monitor them on our iPhone, so that we know when our wells are up running and not. So details, important details like that.
Absolutely.
That don't get in the way of getting our permit from the water.
Right, right, right. Nice. Public Works crews, we need to do a better job identifying where stormwater intrusion occurs into our sewer. We had a presentation a couple months ago with Rural Water.
We did, regarding fog.
And that's INI. Where are we going with INI?
Well, that's, that was inappropriate time to revisit that. Quite frankly, I was overwhelmed and didn't want to stir up concerns in the community with smoke coming out of the ground. I wasn't.
Absolutely.
Ready. And when I looked at their slides, I noticed this army of public works crew around waiting for smoke to appear, and I know that we don't have an army of public works crew.
No, we don't.
So I was trying to think that through, and I didn't want to create more trouble than it was worth. But as it rains, and I get reports from Cypress out of our wastewater treatment plant, the intrusion is a more significant issue than I realized. So that's a good point, we need to get back and revisit that.
Okay. Street sweeper, it was really nice to see it up and running. Are we thinking about odd-even parking sides of the street, so we don't see that wave?
So, yes, even today, we grew more sophisticated in the way that we deploy the street sweeper. The odd-even is a program I'm familiar with that's affiliated with the National Pollution Discharge Elimination Program, the federal program regarding stormwater. And it is common for cities to post no parking the third Thursday of every month, and so people know to move their car across the street and do the odd-even parking. Now that we have parking enforcement, it's appropriate to consider a parking program.
Ah, good.
So we're going to continue to evaluate that and refine that, so that we're in compliance with MPDES standards.
Cool. Wow. Nice.
Because I noticed when it was done, the follow-up. Because I noticed when it was done, the follow-up, when it was done about a year ago, we had parking for a little, uh, sweeping for a little while. And he would sweep maybe ten feet of each street and then, and then swing out and miss three cars and get another ten feet and it's like, well, you know, the misses are more than the hits.
Yeah.
So we can try informally to get the notice out over social media, hey, we're sweeping your neighborhood tomorrow. Could you put your car in the driveway for us? And, and we can try informal things, and if they don't work, then we'll get to the formal sign and, and parking. Parking enforcement can be pretty gruesome. Uh, a lot of the residents are surprised by it. Oh, I have a ticket. I've never gotten a ticket before. And so, I would rather get compliance through, uh, just, uh, habitual changes and cooperation first. So ease into it.
Cool.
By the way, John, look how cool that logo is there. Remember that?
Yes.
They wanted to modernize it, and we said, no, keep it old school. That's a great city logo right there. Sorry.
Cool, we dead? Uh, just a quick question, sorry. What happened on Abbey and, and Fifth?
Oh, we have a-
At Abbey Park?
We have a, a storm drain there that was broken in the middle of the park, a root intrusion that actually crosses the park, parallel to Muculemi. Um, and we discovered that, um, thanks to our public works crew and worked hard to fix that. Um, when the first time it rained, we had a pretty good sizable puddle in front of council member De Vries's house. And it's much better, but it's still just a four inch line, so it required quite a bit of attention this last week. So, that's, that's the inherent, uh, uh, the, the legacy of our, of our, of our plumbing and-
It'll back up whatever it is.
Well, it didn't back up as bad this time as it did the first time, so.
So what, did that have something to do with, uh, what was going on on the corner of First and San Jose Street? There was a bunch of work being done. I meant to ask you for Don.
I'm not familiar with that one.
Oh.
First and San Jose. That was, that, that was one of the three leagues.
Kitty, kinda kitty corner to where, um, La, uh, Casamaria-
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
And the community center.
That, that was the report that we got from council member Freeman. We actually had a leak at the community hall.
Oh, oh my.
Yeah.
It was pretty, pretty bad one too.
Yeah, we got that call over the weekend, a week ago.
It was good that we got out there and fixed it. We didn't wanna drain that reservoir up there.
Thank you. Oh, it's pouring rain, right, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great.
Any more questions? Okay, so we go on. Um, so, reports on, uh, from the city council appointees to regional organizations and committees? Do you have a report?
Well, the intergovernmental committee did not meet, so there's nothing there. Uh, AMBAG did meet. Uh, they are starting to work on their twenty forty metropolitan transportation plan, which is a tri-county area. Um, it's, it's kinda weird because, um, AMBAG is the overall umbrella for Monterey County and for, uh, Santa Cruz County. But for San Benito County, it's actually our own little cog. And then we kinda ship the information off to AMBAG once they're done. So it's kinda, kinda a little strange, but, um, so, um, that, that's what AMBAG is doing right now. Monterey Bay Power, uh, did not have a formal policy board meeting. But we did have an executive board meeting, which I'm on. Uh, so we discussed, uh, the merging with, uh, Santa Barbara County and San Luis Obispo County. And we also discussed a name change because we're now twice as big as we used to be. Uh, and it's no longer Monterey Bay. It's now the entire Central Coast. So, uh, Don and I are gonna announce someday that it's gonna be Central Coast Community Power.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm, I'm on the operations board. City managers are represented in operation.
Leslie, do you have any?
Uh, nothing new to report. Stop watering, it's raining.
Uh, the cog did not meet last month, but I had a, a report from the previous meeting that we had. And this, this shortly, it's the improvement project on, uh, Route one fifty-six. The design, the project design is at ninety-five percent complete. Project plan specification estimates are to be finalized for advertising. Final right-of-way has been delayed. Acquisitions of property and utility agreements are needed to finalize the plant set. Final delivery milestone ready to list is anticipated for April twenty twenty. This date is dependent on success of securing all property rights, utility agreements in order to finalize the right-of-way milestone. The right-of-way is ninety percent of the right-of-way contacts are complete. There are three larger parcels that are ongoing negotiations. Original schedule for completion of the right-of-way was October twenty nineteen, which resulted in scheduled delays for advertising the project for construction. Remove this date to February twenty twenty. Utility agreements PG&E, AT&amp;T, seven liter water district are all underway, anticipating utility agreements to be finalized by February twenty twenty. The environmental all permit package to Army Corps of Engineers, Regional Water Quality Board, and Department of Fish and Wildlife have been submitted. Permits are all a hundred percent complete. Mitigation measures are related to the ag mitigation in California. Tiger Salamander are on track. Potential risks to the schedule and risk continues to remain property acquisitions and utility agreements. Should we be unable to obtain the necessary right-of-way requirements, it could result in delays to the subsequent phases of the project. At this time, the utility companies and property owners are actively working with our team, understand our schedule, and are working to resolve outstanding issues. The project cost, environmental, three point nine million, design, five point five million, right-of-way, twenty-three point three million, construction, fifty-seven point four million. The total is a hundred and five point nine million dollars. And the project is fully funded through construction with local traffic impact fees, local funding, state and interregional improvement program. And the schedule is environmental is October two thousand eight, supplemental, September twenty eleven, the design, April twenty twenty, right-of-way, February twenty twenty. Construction start is scheduled for November twenty twenty, and construction is December twenty twenty-two. And open to the public by December twenty twenty-two. That is it. And I will give you all a copy.
So, so council member, that's the bypass between Hollister and San Juan.
That's the, uh, one fifty-six route. Not a bypass. It's a call project update.
So can we discuss that a little bit?
No, that's for me.
Please.
No, we all get one. We all get one.
It's not on the agenda, we should. It's not on the agenda.
It's not on the agenda. But he can keep the comment on the, on the, the report. Are you done?
No, I need one. I didn't get one.
Discussion has more than one person, so there, you can make a brief comment, but no discussion.
We had a similar report in two thousand and ten, so don't trust Caltrans.
Well, the major problem with Cal, Caltrans, and we've been trying, we met with a senator and she came to our meeting. And, uh, we're trying to get, uh, District Four and District Five to work together, and it's really hard.
Good luck with that.
Yeah, it's really hard, so.
So I just wanna say for the record on the widening of, uh, one fifty-six, I sued, I formed Save San Juan Valley ten years ago. I sued Caltrans twice. I won both cases. And, uh, to no avail, because they would not redesign that configuration, which makes no sense at all. So the public knows it's gonna be the existing one fifty-six, and they're gonna insert four new lanes way to the east or south of the existing one fifty-six with a whole bunch of barren land in the middle. They're gonna chew up all of San Juan Valley for no reason at all, and here's why. It's all gonna bottleneck down back to two lanes at Union Road. How much did you say it's gonna cost? Hundred fifty million dollars? It's the road to nowhere.
Yep.
Or the road to Union.
It makes no sense.
It's the road to Union Road.
So, um, are you done?
I'm done.
I'm not on a committee, but is, is my, my first point, yes?
Yeah, that's later. Okay, so now we go on to, uh, God bless you. We go on to, uh, the strategic plan committee report.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, Todd Kennedy, once again, your city planner. Um, if I may ask, um, this item four E, there's another item on, uh, your agenda tonight under six, uh, B, right there. I was wondering if we could just pu- push this item out and just clump them all together as one. Just a thought.
I think so.
It's under action items, mayor's formation of ad hoc committee.
So you wanna move that, uh, item six B to combine it with strategic plan?
That's what I was thinking. Cause yeah, that way we just talk it all together as once.
The, the minutes from the last meeting are part of that report, so it makes sense to combine it.
Yeah, okay.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Todd.
And now we move on to, um, public hearing.
So, Mayor and city council, the matter before you is an appeal. Appeal of a matter taken up by the planning commission twice. Um, once earlier in the fall as an introduction, and then formally in a public hearing, uh, December twelfth. Uh, continued, uh, from December third to the December twelfth action. Um, the planning commission approved both the environmental and the, uh, and the, uh, project on that date. And then in a timely fashion, it was appealed. And so, the report before you tonight is the appeal. And, uh, it's a, it's a de novo appeal, meaning that, um, you have the, the ability to ask all kinds of questions that have already been asked and, and start over. Um, or, or you can pick up where the planning commission left off. There's been a number of communications shared with the city council. Um, including information received as latest Friday, was passed to the city council member from Clara Bonk and others. So I think, well, everybody should be up to speed and well informed on this matter. Um, uh, David Mack, uh, has been our project manager for the Casa Rosa project. And he's here with a few slides just to give everyone an orientation and, and, and discuss a few of the key points for us. So David?
Excuse me.
Pardon me.
So can you introduce this, this person a little bit better?
So, so David, David Mack is, uh, a senior planner with thirteen years' experience. They came on board with the city October first as a consultant from Harrison Associates. He has former experience with the city of Marina and the county of Monterey, and he's been a great asset to us in reviewing complicated projects such as that, so I appreciate you.
All right. Thank you for the introduction, Don. Again, I am David Mack with Harrison Associates. Um, in the acting role of the senior planner, project manager for Casa Rosa. I know, um, if I'm going too slow, or, you know, if I'm on slides you guys don't wanna hear, let me know. Um, there are some complex issues with this, which I'm happy to cover. They are in this presentation, but again, um, if, if I'm covering stuff you guys don't have questions about or don't want to know, feel free to cut me off and let me know.
There's an error on that slide. It is not point nine five acres.
Okay.
It is point zero nine five acres.
That's, that's correct. It is not close to an acre. I appreciate that. And I think I made that correction at the planning commission and missed it in this. However, the project is located at one oh seven Third Street. The zoning and land use is mixed use within the historic downtown district. The parcel size is just over forty-one hundred acres, and as the gentleman behind me said, it is zero point zero nine five acres. It is not nearly one acre. It is nearly one tenth of an acre. Uh, really quick, as Don mentioned, there's the project history. The planning commission and HRB did hold public hearings for this product, for this proposal on December twelfth, two thousand nineteen. Ultimately, the project was approved unanimously by the HRB and the planning commission. Um, unan-, excuse me, unanimously of the members present. Uh, on December eighteenth, there was an appeal filed timely by Emily Renzel within the appealed deadline. The San Juan Batista municipal code requires that any appeal be held within thirty days. However, in this case, the appellate did agree to have the meeting this evening, January twenty-first, and waived the thirty-day deadline so that the city did not have to hold a special meeting and could hold it on their normal agenda. This is the Casa Rosa, the beautiful, or previously beautiful pink building in San Juan Batista. Um, I'm not going to get into the previous entitlements, but just for the public record, this project did receive an entitlement in two thousand seventeen, and as well known, the previous owner and developer demolished a significant portion of the building, and the way it stands now is-
What was the two thousand seventeen entitlement?
The two thousand seventeen entitlement was, um, a mixed-use entitlement to rehabilitate in some ways and alter the building for a downstairs commercial restaurant use and an upstairs two-bedroom, two-bath, uh, unit.
Specific entitlement in seventeen, was it a building permit?
No, there was-
It could be lots of things.
Yeah, there, there, there was a use permit issued for it in two thousand seventeen.
A conditional use permit?
Yes.
Issued by the planning commission?
By the planning commission, correct.
Thank you.
And I can get into that, that detail if the council would like. The current scope of work is exciting design, review application for a mixed-use development consisting of a restaurant and bar or commercial retail and four residential units. The main building will contain one residential unit, which is two bedrooms, two bath of approximately one thousand square feet. And the rear addition, uh, being proposed would have three units. One unit being a one-bedroom, one-bath, four hundred and twelve square feet. Another unit, while all three being one-bedroom, one-bath. There is actually a studio unit, um, versus a one-bedroom per se. But they were, are approximately one-bed, one-bath, um, style developments. All of those will be added to the rear addition, which will connect to the historical building. And they range from about three hundred and fifty-seven square feet at the smallest to four hundred and seventy-one square feet at the largest. And I apologize that these plans didn't come out in the scan very well, but this is the ground floor as proposed. This is Third Street and Casa Rosa's main doors. The exist, or the proposed residential commercial use with a kitchen. In addition to a kitchen, patio dining area, doors which would access an outdoor dining area. A door here which goes to two restrooms, one sink, two toilets. And this is the first unit. Uh, there is a living space here with a kitchen, a bedroom and a bath. And this is the kinda one-bedroom studio unit, which has an exterior door, living area, there, and a bedroom. However, there is no wall or door separation here, so it's technically a studio unit. Um, but it does function, or, or is intended to function, to have a single residential occupancy. Um, or a small, one to two person living there if they're a small couple.
Can you go back to that size, small ingress egress for those residential units in the back as well?
Sure. So this is, uh, a separate exterior door to this unit. And this, uh, unit here has a access door here.
No, I mean to the street or out to the world?
Uh, so they, yeah, they, they would, and there's a better depiction here, but they would access pedestrian-wise coming off to, is that Franklin or Washington? Franklin Street. Yeah, and I, I'll get into the, the width of this in just a moment. Um, but, but this property does have, it is oddly configured. Um, it does have a little leg that comes out to Franklin, and the, the majority of the building is along Third Street.
So is this the, the first floor?
This is the first floor, the ground floor, yes.
And, and, sorry. I, I just was wondering, is there going to be a patio area for the restaurant for, for eating outside?
Yeah. Uh, there is a patio area here.
Is that enclosed or open?
Uh, I believe that that is enclosed.
I, I'm just wondering how there will be privacy between the patrons having dinner or lunch out there? And then, um, the tenants coming and going. Is there?
There, well, there will, there will be a courtyard here. Um, but that is a great question that you can ask the developer who's here about how he plans to do that. Um, but, and that, as I was gonna, going to point out, there is also a stair, the beginning of a stairway here which goes up to the second floor, which accesses there. So patio, courtyard, stairway. So, very good question.
Is that an exterior or interior? That's the-
That is an exterior stairway.
Okay.
Also, the, the kitchen over here by the, in the restaurant, is that a commercial kitchen?
That will be a commercial kitchen.
And is it, is it two, two kitchens?
Well, this is proposed to be an expansion of the kitchen. The original building ends right about here. And this rear wall is in various states of standing now. The, the building is open to the back. This is one of the portions that was demolished by the previous developer.
So, so the new building and the original building will be sharing a common wall? It's not detached at all? It's-
It is not detached.
Okay.
So moving on to the second floor, as I pointed out, this is the beginning of a stairway. So the stairway would come up here and access, um, as I'm sure you've read, a very unpopular, um, but existing roof walkway that would come to the patio here. No, it's not existing.
Wait, what? Say that again.
The, the stairway comes up here. There's been a lot of correspondence, and you will hear from the public about this walkway. This is an all exterior walkway that comes up from the courtyard, turns the corner, and then there is a- then there is a walkway that is on top of the shed roof.
Okay.
That is exposed, it's an exterior walkway. But I'm pointing that out because I want that to be clear in this, in this plan depiction.
Is the walkway existing right now?
No.
No.
There is nothing there now.
Okay.
There's nothing there.
But, but the apartment over La Casa Rosa, the restaurant area?
Over here.
Yes. Where, where do they access? Do they have to use that, that walkway?
They will access through this door right there.
Okay, and then they, and then they have to go through that walk, that long walkway?
That's correct.
Is that, is that safe for, like, God forbid, it would be a, a fire at 2:00 in the morning. But is that the only exit that those people that are living there will have?
That will be the only entrance and exit. In terms of is it safe, I'm not, I'm not a building official, so I'm not going to chime in whether or not it's safe. The building will be required to be fire sprinkled, so it would be just as safe as any other multi-story building. But I, I do point that out because there have been public concerns as well as some concerns from other discussions, so I want that to be clear on this.
So will the fire suppression quickly go to the, go to the rear residential units also?
The entire building will need to be fire sprinkled.
That's including the re- residential units?
The residential, yes, absolutely.
I'm, I'm sorry, you weren't, you weren't done saying what you were gonna say. Can you finish what you were gonna say?
Yeah, I just wanted to make it clear that this is an external stairway and walkway to the residential.
Yeah.
Do you, do you have any exterior elevations of what that looks like from a side view?
Uh, I...
Is it a sky bridge?
It, I wouldn't say it's a bridge, but yeah, it's, it's similar to a sky bridge. But...
But it spans one structure to another, like going across?
Uh, no, it does not span a structure. There's actually the rest, the, the lower, the, one of the first-floor units and the restroom and the kitchen expansion, there will be a roof on top of this. And this, like, if the roof was at this angle, the bridge, the, the walkway will sit on this. There will not be open space underneath it. So I wouldn't say it's a sky bridge.
Okay.
It's structurally built on top of the first floor.
On, on top of the first roof?
Yes.
I get it.
Okay, and so is there an overhang or is something protecting the, the people from the inclement, say when it's raining, people carrying groceries?
It will be an open air walkway.
So, okay, so they won't be covered?
No.
I'll grab an umbrella.
However, to access this third unit in the rear, you will need to come up the stairs, and this is the entry, entry door to the upstairs second-level unit.
Is there a ground floor unit on that other side?
Yeah, so back to the first floor, there's one unit here, one unit here. Second floor has a third unit, and then the two-bedroom, two-bath unit is upstairs of the main building.
For a total of four new units?
For a total of four units.
So David, I noticed that on the, the larger unit, there are washer and dryer hookups there, but I didn't see any in the, the smaller units.
I don't believe there are washer and dryer hookups for the smaller units.
Because we don't have a laundromat here in, in San Juan Batista. So people that would be living in there, they wouldn't have a way to, to wash their clothes?
The only thing I'll say is the building code does not require washer and dryer units in hookups and units.
Okay.
So mov- moving quickly, if I can, the development standards for the property. As I mentioned, it is mixed use. The minimum lot width is 25 feet. Residential density is 8 to 15. This will come into play momentarily. There is no, excuse me, the floor area ratio on the chart has a note. For structures within the downtown historic district, the floor area ratio may be 1.5. All other mixed-use areas, the floor area ratio shall be .75. So this is an interesting distinction that we need to make. Building coverage is limited to .85. Maximum height is three stories or 50 feet. And the minimum setbacks, front side and rear, is another note. Note 10, which shall be 10% of the depth of the lot or 10 feet, whichever is less. However, the Planning Commission may allow deviations of the setbacks based upon individual project site plan and building layout. The Planning Commission did have a discussion, and I did present this chart to them about the setbacks of the property. There's been various correspondence, and you will probably hear from the public about the rear setback. So I'm not advocating for either side, I just want to call attention to this note. The Planning Commission could approve an altered setback, and in this case, they actually did approve the project as proposed. So that, that was very transparent through the process. It was not kind of cloak and dagger. You are getting almost the same slide presentation they got with the exact same slides.
And so what are the setbacks?
Well, the setbacks on this property are in the rear, it's, it's pretty slim. It's, I'd say between a foot and a foot and a half. It's pretty small. So the allowed FAR is 1.5. The proposed project is at .95. So it would be consistent with the floor area ratio allotment. The allowed coverage is .85. This project is proposed to be .6. The allowed height is three stories, 50 feet, and the project is proposed to be two stories and approximately 25 feet. So it does meet all of the development standards found within Chapter 11.03. I'm not going to walk through all the general plan zoning compliance inconsistencies. I can if you would like, but they're detailed in the Planning Commission staff report, which was attached to your packet. I can walk you through that if you'd like, but in the interest of time, I can just say that it is consistent with the rest, historic resources permitting sections, the site plan review sections, and eight or more general plan policies geared towards affordable housing, housing and mixed-use development. So as Councilman De Vries asked, this is kind of a better picture of the site plan. The property does, it's considered a flag lot, Third Street here, and it does have this nine-to-10-foot kind of leg that accesses through here.
Is that an easement or that, that's fee titled to the...
That is fee title, that is part of the property.
Really?
So in terms of calculating site coverage, FAR, that area of property factors into that calculation.
Right, right.
It, it is fee title property, it is part of it, it's not an easement, it's actually part of the property.
And how wide is it, David?
I think I roughly measured it, it's between nine and a half and 10 feet.
It's not 10 feet.
Yeah, it...
And that's, that's between the former mayor's house and the co- look...
That's correct.
The adobe?
Yeah.
And Himalayas?
Yeah, that's what I meant.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, and I bring that up because Section 1111130 allows the city manager to waive onsite parking if said parcel is unable to accommodate parking due to shape, size, location, or presence of buildings. In this case, Don did not waive parking. This, this was a policy issue that was presented to the Planning Commission for them to weigh and make a decision on. And this, but again, this parcel shape does not, in my professional opinion, does not facilitate onsite parking. Existing driveway measures between nine and a half and 10 feet. It is not 10 feet, that's why I said between nine and a half and 10. It varies. It's located approximately one foot from the adjacent property lines, if it's one foot on each side. So if you've stood at the old mayor's house, you'll, you'll see a gate now, and you'll, if you really peek through that, you'll see like a stack of bricks. I'm not sure if the bricks are on the mayor's property or this property, or if they cross that parcel line. That, that's how close these parcel lines actually are. So in my professional opinion, this little jog or leg does not allow safe vehicular movement. You'd have to have one car go in and back up the same way, or back in and pull out. It doesn't really, it's not conducive to delivery traffic for the, the commercial use. And I'm not at all going to try to pretend that it is. In the interest of safety and community building, that should really only be used for pedestrian access. You know, for commercial deliveries, perhaps with a hand truck, a truck could park there. And I do also want to, once I get my cursor back, point out, there is not even a curb cut here anymore. From my understanding, there used to be a curb cut there, and it was taken out and paved with solid cur, or a sidewalk curb and gutter at, at some point in the past.
Lot lines like that probably go back to 1800s.
Yeah.
So what do you plan on doing with that alleyway, David? Is that gonna be used for the property for ingress egress or walkway or what?
Yeah, I believe, again, that's something the developer can speak to, but I believe his intention is to have this be access for the residential units from a pedestrian-only.
Pedestrian-only.
Yeah.
And going back to the nine-foot, the 10-foot, is that wide or is it length?
No, it, it's nine and a half to probably nine feet, 10 and a half inches wide.
Wide.
Yeah, it's pretty hard. I don't know what the length of it is, but it's, it's, it's pretty narrow, to be honest.
The, the adobe.
I mean, if, if you, if you figure the average car is seven to eight feet, you'd, you'd have a hard time. I mean, a fire truck is 12 feet wide, so you're not gonna get a fire truck down there. So I, I pointed out for the parking options, 'cause obviously regardless of the development on this site, any onsite parking would be difficult for this property. Continuing through parking, Section 1111120, which is titled "On-Street Parking," allows parcels within the mixed-use district to utilize and count available on-street parking spaces on abutting streets, and that's, that's a key, within 150 feet towards parking compliance. So the project needs to supply roughly three parking spaces for the three residential units in the back. The reason I say that, and that's another point of contention, is the 2017 entitlement approved the commercial use downstairs and the two-bedroom, two-bath continued use of the main building. That entitlement did not require additional parking, so the assumption, and I could be wrong, is that there was adequate parking for that existing two-bedroom, two-bath. So as, since the project is supplying three one-bedroom equivalent units, they would need to supply three additional parking spaces. Staff conducted research on the on-street parking within 150 feet of the property lines on the, on the abutting streets, Third Street and Franklin, and there are roughly 10 to 15 available on-street parking spaces. Whether they are available 24 hours a day or different in times?
Yeah.
Great point, but they are available for somebody to park there at some point. And that's really the only test of this section. They don't have to be available during business hours, they don't have to be available overnight, they just have to be available on-street parking. So staff believes that there are available parking to meet the requirement of three parking spaces. I'm not gonna stand here and say that there are three available at all times, or that parking may or not be an, an issue, but there are available parking spaces on the abutting streets within 150 feet.
So on the weekend, this could potentially take away parking from tourists?
Absolutely. It could.
Weekends. Weekends.
Yeah.
And on, and on weekdays or weeknights, I mean, the other just projects to...
Lunch today, I had a...
Our practice.
I mean, and just, just to be fair, on the other side, commercial uses could take away residential parking spaces. So it goes both ways. People could be living there and have a hard time finding parking, and people could be coming to San Juan Batista for the restaurant use and have a hard time finding parking.
And have, has the developer been made aware that during events, cars get towed?
I, I'm sure cars being towed is a normal thing that most developers would think about.
Okay.
But you, you can ask him about that. I mean, and, and I don't wanna speak for him or sound coy...
Absolutely.
But obviously, most people who park illegally should expect to have their car towed in most jurisdictions or cities. So continuing through parking, Section 1111120B, titled "Off-Street Parking Reduction," allows, and this is, this was interesting to me when I read it, "mixed-use developments to reduce off-street parking by 10 spaces or 25%, whichever is greater, if the parcel is 400 feet from a public parking lot or garage." San Juan Batista does not have a parking garage, but there are public parking areas. And I outlined, once I get my cursor back, this is, is maybe not the most conducive or popular parking area, but this is a public area. And actually, anecdotally, I walked out last week when I was here and talked to the state parks, 'cause I thought maybe, you know, this is state parks property, that the ranger I talked to actually said they consider both sides of the street public parking. So I don't wanna put them on the spot, but they do consider that public parking. It is generally used when chaperones come or visitors come to the different restaurants.
No, 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 no.
This, this is the street.
Towards the blacksmith shop.
Yeah.
Towards the livery stable for parking.
Yeah, yeah, right, the old stables.
Don't use it on the left-hand corner.
Yep, old stables are up here. This, this is the walkway to the public restroom here on State Park Park.
Oh, okay.
It's the orchard, it's next to the orchard.
Yeah.
It is a public street, so it can be considered public parking.
How far, David, how far away is, are the, is that parking lot for the new soccer fields between the school?
Um, I don't know offhand, but I happen to have Google Earth open, and we're gonna measure that, 'cause I, I pulled it up.
'Cause that's a big area.
It, it, I, I will say that that area is within 400 feet of the site.
So my school though, right?
Uh, I, I, I can't comment who owns it, but... So this, this red square is within 400 feet of, of the property. It's actually measures, as I noted on here, it's 132 feet from the center of this building. Okay, so there, there was one person after the Planning Commission who asked me, did I measure from the very corner to the very corner? No, actually, I measured literally from this pin drop to around here. That's 132 feet. Regardless of where it gets measured from, 132 feet is within 400 feet. So the reduction of 10 parking spaces would satisfy the requirement for the three required parking spaces. This, as I walk through parking, I just wanna point out, there are multiple requirements in the San Juan Batista parking ordinance that contradict each other. So on one hand, you can use on-street parking to satisfy, on this, this regulation, you can get a reduction of 10 parking spaces or 25% if you're within 400 feet of a public parking area. This one is within 400 feet of a public parking area, so you could grant him a parking reduction.
We don't, we don't have to designate a spot. Unit 1A has to park here?
No.
Okay.
And, and that, that's why this gets a little uncomfortable, is you're not designating public spots for anybody, you're just saying that there are available public spaces.
Okay. You'll have to, you'll have to go out and find it, right?
Yeah. So moving through the parking regulations, and I, I'm, I'm trying to go through this, but I, I wanted, I'm going to spend significant time on this. Section 1111120 subsection F is the in-lit parking fee. The planning, and this is verbatim, "The Planning Commission can impose an in-lit parking fee subject to subsection B," I just wanna go backwards really quick, that's this section. All right, this is B, off-street parking, "if the commission believes that the off-site parking reduction is warranted." So as I mentioned, there are 20 to 20, 20 to 15 to 20 currently available parking spaces within 150 feet, and there are 10 to 15 public parking spaces within 400 feet of the site. So the parking in-lit fee could have been applied to the project.
But the Planning Commission did not apply that?
I'm gonna, but the Planning Commission did not condition the project to do that.
How much is an in-lit per space?
So as I noted on the bottom, the council could add the fee if they determine the appropriate amount, and I'll let Don take over a little bit more of this if the commission would, or the council would like. The current in-lit park, parking fee done by the parking study is $7,700 per space.
So the, the parking study was done in 2016 and provided to the City Council as what it would cost to develop a surface parking lot, so the cost of asphalt and the cost of the square footage. And it was, been updated since then annually, so it was about $6,000 originally, and it's increased 3 to 5% since then to give to this number of 7,700. It's, was done by the, the prior city manager, who was a civil engineer, but it's, I don't know if it's strong enough to defend any kind of legal battle. It's not a, a formal study of, of what it costs, and it's not current, so those are...
7,700 in the per space, and you think, David, that we need three?
Right.
Well, well, so I, I'm not gonna say they need three. For three one-bedroom units, they should supply three. But then these other two sections give the decision-makers, the Planning Commission, and now the City Council, the ability to determine if there are available public parking spaces that could satisfy Section A, B, and if the, if not, and you would like to apply the parking, the in-lit fee, you can apply the parking fee. So I...
Times three.
Times three.
Okay.
And then as Don said, I, I can't comment on the parking study. I, I wasn't a consultant with the city, I had nothing to do with that. I will say that if the Planning Commission, or now the City Council, wants to apply a fee, you have to be able to show a nexus to apply fees. And I think that's kind of what Don may be alluding to, is whether or not the parking study is defensible. I don't know, I'm just going to point out that currently the fee would be $7,700. You could apply it to one space, two spaces, three spaces, or you could determine, as the Planning Commission did, that they don't actually need to pay this because there's available public parking.
Okay, got it.
All right, so moving, any questions on parking before I move through? Uh, so moving, any, any questions on parking before I move through? I mean, I'm open to your questions later.
No, no, I, I'm, I'm okay with the parking.
This is very different than the parking survey that was done last year by, by Ed, correct?
So I did provide to the council and will present to the planning commission in February, a parking study that was done by Harrison Associates that talks about the potential for the city to lease or, or acquire some of the vacant lots in the downtown, and then turn around and provide either a paid parking option or a similar option so that we have additional parking for the downtown as a, as a holistic approach to parking in the downtown, so.
So the in-lu fees could go to purchase or lease said lots that are now kind of, so, some of them hanging around with nothing to do, and, uh.
Right, and we have a parking impact fee that has a little bit of money in it, but not a whole lot, but.
That, that was gonna be my question too. If there is an in-lu fee collected by the city, does it go into a dedicated account? Does it go into general fund?
No, it has to be dedicated to that purpose.
Has to be a dedicated account.
Exactly, the whole point of the nexus.
And there's money in that dedicated account, right?
Uh, fourteen thousand dollars.
And this would be another twenty-three thousand, one hundred, based on three spaces at seven, seven, seven.
That's not enough to buy a lot of parking space, but might buy a few.
If it leased.
Yeah.
And that's three spots for four units?
Yeah, that, I was gonna ask about that too.
He's asking for four units.
It's, it's three spaces because the, the two-bedroom, two-bath unit, right, that's the, that's the fourth unit, was already approved in two thousand seventeen, so it doesn't mean you can't apply parking, but this project brings forward three additional units than the original entitlement.
Understood.
And the original entitlement did not require additional parking.
Okay.
That's why I asked about that entitlement in two thousand seventeen. So that sets like a baseline.
Okay.
In two thousand seventeen, there was a CUP, no additional parking required, and now this is above and beyond that, so three additional units.
Yeah, so just as an aside, the two thousand seventeen entitlement is actually still valid. The current property owner could just build that if he wanted to. It may not pencil out for him economically, but he could build it. And if he did build it, he would not have to supply additional parking for that two-bedroom, two-bath unit, cause it's approved.
Yeah, okay.
So that's kinda the rationale. I'm not arguing for or against parking.
Nope, understood.
Uh, so affordable housing is the next big topic. The project is proposing four total units. They're proposed to be all restricted as moderate income because this project is below six units, right? Six units, it does not trigger the inclusionary housing ordinance of San Juan Batista, so the developer is voluntarily giving affordable units. He's not required to deed, to deed restrict these affordable units. He could build them at market rate if he wanted to, but there's some incentives for him to do this, and I'll walk through that. So again, it's three bed, three, one-bedroom, one-bath or equivalent units in the rear. Based on the chart from the county of San Benito and the housing, those would rent at the moderate rate for roughly one thousand, seven hundred and three dollars. The city does not determine how, how much he can rent them for. He could rent them for less if he wanted to, but he cannot rent them for more than one thousand, seven hundred and three dollars.
Voluntarily.
Voluntary. Well, I mean, if they're deed restricted to be moderate units.
The deed restriction is voluntary.
Yes, and the deed restriction is voluntary. But he's proposing this to do additional density.
He's proposing to put a limit on himself?
Yes, in, in exchange for additional units.
Right.
Yeah. So the one bed, the one, two-bedroom, two-bath in the main unit would rent for no more than one thousand, nine hundred and forty-six. He is proposing an eight-year term controlling the affordable housing agreement. There have been some public comments, and you'll hear them, um, they're very good comments about why not deed restricted for thirty years, or forty years, or fifty years. Reason is this is a voluntary dedication. It doesn't trigger this, the affordable housing ordinance. He does not have to deed restrict them for a certain amount of years.
So he wants it to go way after eight?
That's what he's proposing.
Alright.
Um, and I'll, I'll let Dawn or, or the developer, Raheem, talk, talk about that, cause there were some discussions about that.
David, uh, I don't mean to interrupt you, but I wanted to make a point that the people, the local people that live here, that work here, it would be nice for them to be able to rent these units. But I, I myself talk to people that I know. Um, they bring in maybe three thousand dollars a month, and it's a husband, wife, they have children.
Yeah.
Another couple, uh, they're, they're a couple, they have an adult child that lives with them. They bring in a total of three thousand dollars. Another individual, she's a single woman, she brings in a thousand dollars.
Yeah.
And they work here locally. It would be so nice for them to be able to rent these units. But instead, what's gonna happen is people from the Bay Area, Morgan Hill, Gilroy, probably Salinas, they are the ones that are gonna come in here and rent those units. It won't be for our local people. Our local people that live here and work here. Their kids go to school here, and there's a number of them. It's a big number of people that, that cannot afford that kind of a rent.
Sure, I, I, I mean, I, I don't know where the tenants may come from, but that's a very big possibility.
But it's not affordable. That is not affordable.
Well, so, I mean, personally, I, I can't agree or disagree. All I can say is that the affordability rates are not set by San Juan Batista. They're set by the county of San Benito. Um, and they, they take the average median income, and there are certain percentages. I think thirty percent of average median is extremely low, and then it, it ticks up. Moderate is considered workforce. Um, I mean, they are, it, it's a problem in every jurisdiction. I'm not defending the numbers. I'm just, that's, that's a rental cap. If the market dictates that maybe these are approved and built, and they don't rent for that number, and they're sitting vacant, the rent may go down, but they can't, it can't go above those numbers. Unless the new affordable housing rates are released, and then they do unfortunately, every cycle tick up just a bit based on the average median income within San Benito County. Um, and I think that's a, that, that's a good probably discussion outside of this project that maybe the council should have later, um, where maybe we can get the housing coordinator from San Benito County to come explain that. Um, I can only talk to what he will be limited to at that income level. So moving forward, government code section six, five, nine, one, five, B, one, D, and F four, which is housing geared legislation from the past, grants the, the applicant, if the affordable provision is above forty percent, and in this case, this is a hundred percent affordable, grants them a density bonus of thirty-five percent and one entitlement or concession, and that is a by right entitlement or concession. That is not at the discretion of the city council. That is at the discretion of the developer, and I, I think, um, so the attorney mall can chime in on some more details or legalities of that. I'm trying to summarize it, um, the best that I can, and there is a detailed analysis in the planning commission staff report attached to your packet, um, which kinda walks through that a little bit better.
Can you tell me what that actually means?
The concession or entitlement?
Mm-hmm.
It means that if you're doing a project that is forty percent affordable or higher, the developer gets to pick one regulation or limitation that they can choose to go above, and there's no discretion on it. So, in this case, the developer, and I'm gonna walk through density. The base density, as I said earlier, is eight to fifteen units per acre. The site would be allowed, it's just under one point five. It's like one point four nine, three, six units. Um, so it would be one at the minimum. If you rounded that up, it'd be two. In the planning profession, generally, it's, if it's above one, you round up cause you can't supply a fraction of a unit, and they want you to supply more. There's been some arguments that if it's below one point five, you round down, which is the normal mathematical rounding. But under California law, if you're above a whole number, you're supposed to round up. And there's pros and cons to that, right? If the developer, if, if this was subject to the affordable housing agreement or ordinance, and the developer had to supply, say, three point one, the city would probably ask him to supply four, not three. Or three point four, you guys would probably ask for four, not three. Or five, so, so I mean, it cuts both ways. In this case, the average density, like I said, is below one point five. So it would be allowed between one and two units, arguably each way. A density bonus of thirty-five percent for the affordability would grant them one additional unit, so he would be at two to three. And the, out, the developer's requested concession or incentive is the additional units for a total of four. They're not asking for one additional unit. They're asking for additional units. Between one and two, right? It's, it's, it's not quite two, but it's a fraction of one and a half. So justification for the additional units is based on the required restoration and rehabilitation costs for the historic main building. Um, the developer believes the project is infeasible without being able to gain increased site revenue from the rental of the units until they have a locked-in tenant of the commercial use. Um, so they are basing this on their ability to, to draw rent on the building. Um, and I'll, I'll allow Raheem to, if he, if he'd like, I don't think he has to, talk about what the anticipated restoration cost is. But based on the condition of the building, it's probably fairly high.
And are the, are, are these units ADA compliant?
The bottom units will have to be ADA compliant under building code. The second level units do not need to be.
They don't?
No. And I, again, I'm not a, a building official, but you do have to supply at, at least one or if not two ADA units, and the bottom level units would be. So under the regional housing needs allocation or needs assessment or RENA, the city is required to build forty-one units. Twenty-four of those are affordable units. So seventeen could be market rate, but twenty-four have to be affordable. This project is proposing to build, or of, eight of those twenty-four need to be at the moderate income level. And this project is proposing to build four units, all at moderate. So that would satisfy fifty percent of the city's requirement under the RENA numbers for affordability, for the, the moderate affordability, and approximately seventeen percent of the overall RENA.
That's in the last cycle, not the upcoming one for two thousand twenty-one, right?
That's correct.
So the last cycle, would that include ADUs from Copperleaf and Rancho Vista also, and, um?
If, if the ADUs are deed restricted, it could, but most ADUs don't.
I don't know.
And interestingly enough, and again, I, I'm not the expert on the new legislation that's come out. I'm not the expert on new legislation that's come out, but as of January first, the housing laws in California are completely turned upside down. And ADUs, inch, I mean, just as an aside, away from this project, under one of the new assembly bills, ADUs do not need to be restricted for affordability and previously restricted affordable units. Um, it becomes null and void. So, not subject or applying to this project, but that's an interesting twist. The project can be considered, the project can be considered exempt from CEQA under section fifteen, three, thirty-one, class thirty-one. And I'm just gonna read it for the record, um, which applies to limited maintenance, repair, stabilization, rehabilitation, restoration, preservation, conservation, or reconstruction of historical resources in a manner that's consistent with the Secretary of Interior standards for the treatment of historic properties with guidelines for preserving, rehabilitating, restoring, or reconstructing historic buildings. The site originally had a historic report prepared by Garvaglia and Associates. Mike Garvaglia, who runs that firm, is standing in the back and can answer a wide variety of historical questions. Um, with regards to the report, through the processing of this, the city did consult with Garvaglia to make sure that the two thousand, two thousand seventeen report was still applicable to this exact project. And, uh, Garvaglia and Associates stated that it was. That report determined that the projects, previous project, was consistent with the Secretary um, of interior standards, so the project could be considered exempt from CEQA as long as they follow that report.
So that was on the original, original building?
It was on the original building.
So, I, I might need to direct this to you. Um, why is, is the, the new addition, why is that included in it?
Well, I'll, I'll let, I'll let Mike talk.
Sorry, sorry to interrupt.
From a planning point of view, the, the new addition is not historic, just the main building is historic.
Understood, understood. And sorry, you don't have to answer that now. Um, we can continue on with this.
Before you leave, I just want, I just wanted to ask, while you're still standing there, and I wanna ask Deborah. By, um, us having the rent be seventeen hundred dollars for the unit that, on the high end, are we setting precedence by allowing this developer to charge these rents? And then later on, we end up having another developer come and want to build homes? And he wants to start at the extreme high instead of going to the lower end? Do, are we starting something here?
So I wouldn't say that's precedence. I would say that those are rates that are set by the county of San Benito.
Right.
So if someone wants to come in and build moderate housing, those are the rates previously set, so there's no real precedence. I mean, that's, we're adhering to the previously set rates.
And with the understanding that if the project is less than six, then, then there's more flexibility. When the inclusionary housing ordinance is applicable, they are applicable for low and very low income houses, not the moderate income level. So, so the decision, any decision in this regard does not affect those projects impacted by the inclusionary housing ordinance.
Thank you.
Okay. So we covered CEQA. Uh, so as you know, uh, from your packet, staff's recommendation is that the staff recommends the city council take the following actions: deny the appeal filed by Emily Renzel for the reasons detailed in the staff report and the fact that the project is consistent with the applicable development standards. Um, and just as a side note, I didn't cover it in my presentation, but there are contention responses in the packet to the contentions made in the appeal, um, but the bulk of those contentions are about these issues, which is why I walked through them. Adopt a resolution finding the project categorically exempt from CEQA, and approve the resolution approving the site and architectural design review for the findings and evidence, and subject to the recommended conditions of approval, which are all attached in your packet. And I believe there's thirty-four, thirty-five of them. Um, and then just as another side note, the planning commission, I think, added three conditions, which are the last three at the end of those conditions. They just fell into line with the numbers. And I'm available for questions if you have any.
Well, and, and you know, this might, question might not be for you. It could be the developer, it could be the architect, but, um, we, I, I really feel that the, uh, floor plans are, are inadequate. I think we need to have better renderings, uh, maybe some color boards, um, just for us to be able to make an educated decision. These plans are really hard to envision, and I walked the site, and I, I still don't get it. So we need something that's in more detail.
Noted.
Thank you very much for putting up with us during that. Come on down.
Oh, yeah. Lost track.
Right, so are we moving to public comment here? Or are there any other questions?
I'm getting a question answered.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Yeah, and there, I can provide a little more detail about the nature of, I'm Michael Garavalia, uh, Garavalia Architecture. I've had the practice for a third of a century, I like to say. Uh, we deal with primarily historic proj, projects of all types around, mostly only in California, but around the state. Uh, it's, no, it doesn't.
Disconnect.
I'll try talking louder, which I'm not very good at.
Mike, can I introduce you a little bit?
Yes.
This is the pre-eminent historic architect in Northern California. This is the guy. If you have a historic structure, you wanna rebuild, or you wanna remodel it, or anything you wanna do with this historic structure, I'll pass lead to him. He's from San Francisco. Thanks for coming down here tonight.
Absolutely. Um, yeah, I actually grew up in Saratoga and, and resident of the Bay Area, so, um, my family used to come down to San, San Juan Batista pretty regular basis. My mother loved it here, so. But, um, going to the, uh, just a little bit about a preservation architecture firm, uh, to, to do this kind of work, uh, the qualifications of the historians and the architects that are working on the project, uh, this, uh, the National Park Service has professional qualification standards that, that are typically met or exceeded by, by staff members, so at this point, all the work that's been done on the project has been evaluated by qualified people and with the intent of, uh, supporting and, uh, a preservation project. I'm very engaged with historic preservation, I'm a large supporter of it. I find it extremely important to our cultural issues within our society. And there's many stories to tell and protect. So it's very much a mission of myself and the firm, so you know, I take this all very seriously. The project, is there an existing, a plan of existing building in the? Pre-existing, thank you very much. Well, I can.
Elevations or?
No, the actual plan. Is there maybe an existing, any existing?
As-built, plenty?
Well, just the, in the drawing set, there was an existing.
Let me just pull it up.
If you've got it. What I want to describe is what existed prior to work without permits. The Casa Rosa, the two-story building, which is the older building, obviously, everyone's pretty familiar with that, but the addition that people are calling an addition actually was the existing, there's no way to really show it.
At least got the original plan.
I think.
We can get on this screen.
You might have it. So I'll just kind of further explain. So the two-story structure, the older structure, and then there was a one-story board wall portion of the building, which originally was sheds, it was early on, and then it was occupied and used as a structure. There's a, the very far rear of the building, there was a garage built, and that was actually a frame, frame building. So the footprint of the proposed project is almost exactly the same as the footprint of the original building. The board wall building, which is literally a board, a wall made of boards, this is a very simple type of construction that's been done, was challenged. They had no foundation, and there were, some of the floors were springy and whatnot. So it needed. Yeah. And that.
Yeah, it doesn't focus on very well.
That's about as good as it gets. All right. Okay. Anyway, the main thing is that you can see the footprint of the original building, the walls of the main, that narrow structure, were made of boards, and they were in need of repair. So the way to solve this problem, if you can't, you know, and there's a lot of wood rot that was getting into the building, the floor structure itself was very lightweight framing, as was the roof. So it's not a very substantive structure, but it was going to be used as a commercial kitchen. So the idea was, you disassemble the building and put up the framing, and then you reapply the siding. In a project that complies with the Secretary of Interior Standards for Rehabilitation, the idea is to conserve as much of the historic material as possible. So when the material's no longer, doesn't have a useful life anymore, you replace it in kind. So the instructions on the drawing were to remove the boards, salvage them, stockpile them, frame up the building, then reapply the siding accordingly. The base of the wall, the boards are sitting on a mudsill, and there was termite damage and wood rot coming into the building. So that's, when you get into wood rot and termite damage, there is sometimes irreparable damage, and it is beyond repair. So that is what the, that narrow section of the building was going to be a replacement. Technically, it may or may not have been historic, we're just assuming it was historic and handled it accordingly. And as a contributor to the Third Street District, it's not really a contributing piece of the building, but I think it's an important piece of the building and was being replaced essentially in kind. There's been a slight, a one-foot addition, moving to the south, that end of the building to make that unit a little bit wider, wall was moved one foot, and of course, the addition of the unit, which was a storage room in the original 2017 approval, that became a unit. So the work that's going on on the Casa Rosa building is rehabilitation. It's not going to be stripped of its historic fabric. If siding is repairable, usable, it will be repainted. If there is termite damage or wood rot that needs to be addressed, in a rehabilitation project, you would want to fix it, it has to be replaced in time. That is a rehabilitation project. And that's what the plans have approved. So any existing windows, the canopy, which is still there, thank goodness, it wasn't removed, and during, there was a period of time when it was being considered to be removed. It was just four posts, Stephen Duquette, the engineer, so just put four posts to hold up, if it needs to be, the structure needs to be replaced, and again, it's been there for a long time, and it had a lot of extra weight on it, all that ivy. So that canopy stays, there won't be, it will not be a deck, the door that went, essentially goes out, is called to be, essentially screwed shut, not replaced with something else. So all of that historic fabric is going to be rehabilitated. So it's all manageable, there's enough there to work with.
So the deck will be decorative and not functional, in terms of people walking out?
Exactly. There's no reason for people to walk out there, it requires a different structural solution, the rail would need to be increased. It was looked at at one time, but we back it. It's nice for parades, but I can't say that someone will climb out their window and stand on it, but, so, so the building's being rehabilitated. The interior had been fairly heavily remodeled in the past. The access to the unit was inside the building, thus you need an exterior access for the unit to function properly. You can't walk to the restaurant to go, and that's the way the old stair was. So originally, we had a stair, there was a stair in the original approval, that upstairs yielded above that, there was a stair right here, which we removed, because it was close to the proper line, you know, sort of a different client, different sensitivities, took that out, that had been approved previously, and there was a stair within this footprint to get up to the storage room with the original proposal, but now being converted to a housing unit. The walkway, which is on the roof, it's a walking service on the roof, is to get to the front unit, yes. So being there's no onsite parking, I assume I just hit that. Whoever's going to walk, I don't own a garage, and I live in San Francisco, I have to walk from the bus or from my car to my house. I have an umbrella. And that's urban living. So this is an urban, these are urban units, these are not suburban units, so it's a little bit distinction. When I was, went to school in San Luis Obispo, I lived on Higera Street in a little one-bedroom apartment, up above a bank building, I think it was. It was an urban unit, tiny. So that's just kind of the characteristic of this sort of a housing unit. So the, overall, again, the project is intended to be a rehabilitation, we tried to make the impacts to neighbors, whatnot, as limited as possible. It is, is it preferential to walk along that walkway? Maybe not, but you're still entering on that deck, that's how you get into the unit, and that, or having another staircase, because you know, the additions are, the two-story elements are separated. Additions are allowed in the, within the standards for rehabilitation, they want to be removed from the main building. The addition here really is the second story piece of the rear, that rear spine. That's original structure that's being replaced. And the drawings, based on the nature of the construction, it was disassembled and intended to be reassembled, or to be, you know, whatever material was there to be reused as historic fabric. So that's the basic concept. Might answer some of those sensitivities, and again, it's a preferential, but it beats another stair right over the, next to the proper line, that's, you know, we thought it would be best to remove that deposit.
And so there was no way you could salvage the staircase that was there? It's still there?
On the inside?
On the inside.
It's right in the middle of the commercial space, so it's just very difficult. It's a tiny space, it needs to rent, it has to be functional to rent, and it's as a restaurant, that's the plan right now. But to get to that staircase, it's in the middle of everything, and it's not the original staircase. So it was an alteration at some point, you know, was it 1940?
So the staircase has no historical value in and of itself?
How do you determine that?
Just the way the stairs constructed. So if you looked at the type of construction, the type of materials that are used in a building of this age, they're rougher, they're different dimensions, the framing techniques, the fasteners, you know, nails are different, there's just a lot of variations.
Because I walked on those stairs, and they looked old to me.
They're old, but they're not, you know, they're not from the 1870s, let's say.
They're not.
No, there was, actually, you can see where the original staircase was located, which is, was in this area. You can look at the framing above here, and you can see what the staircase is. Anyway, I don't want to get into too much detail. The project was found to comply with all ten standards. Again, this is a rigorous process. In my contracts, I say, the outcomes of reports cannot be predetermined, okay? I cannot be, my opinion cannot be bought by somebody. And I have to have a very bright line to maintain that reputation. I don't get work because of that clause in my contracts. So I have a lot of respect for this building, I have a lot of respect for the district, I have a lot of respect for the neighbors. Change can occur within the confines of the standards. If they go outside of the standards, you've got a different environmental review process, which for a project like this, you can't afford. You need to design this to comply with the standards. That's the fastest way to get an approval, and generally, I think, in most instances, we've achieved that, if the drawings are followed. Now, the previous owner was a cowboy and didn't follow basic rules. Didn't damage the building in a way that would take it off, would not make it non-contributing. It's an important fact here. So the shell of the building is the main portion that's contributing to the district. He overdid it, but we still have a historic resource, that's an important distinction. And it will be handled as a rehabilitation project, and the developer is committed to that, and he understands what he's in for. He's done this kind of, you know, repair work in the past. He can explain his own background. So the standards, the primary ones are six, which is standard number six, which basically deals with repairing, or how you repair or replace historic fabric. And nine and 10 are issues about additions. So nine is about compatibility of the addition, how the design fits, how it works with the historic structure. So this, again, this addition, that second story piece is way at the back, and it has to be reversible when it covers up historic fabric, but it's not. Again, I don't see the spine as being an addition, I see it as a replacement of original building, I like to think of as historic, a historic portion of the building. So because we called for it to replace as much of the usable siding as possible, because the wall was the siding, then that's a strong statement about rehabilitation. So I think that it covers most of the major topics.
But Mike, that last statement is as regards footprint only for the rear, correct? There certainly wasn't anything two-story back there.
No, the second story addition over the, which, this area was a garage, and that was actually a later addition from the shed structure.
So in other words, then, to back up your statement that I don't see this as being an addition as much as it is historic, you're talking about footprint?
Exactly, yeah, the one-story spine and garage that was there, which the developer, the previous owner, took down that.
So will the architecture of that back unit be complement the front unit?
It's all very simple, the siding of the spine is board and batten, so that's what the, what the wall material will be, there's some window openings. There it is. So you can see the board and batten siding, there's a little, the guard rail for the walkway, which could be altered, if you wanted an open rail, you could do that too. We thought it may be a little, something a little more solid.
So this is the side view from Franklin?
From, this would be from, as if you were standing in the courtyard looking at the side of the building.
So it would be on the Franklin side, right?
Yes, yes.
This is from Franklin, this would be Franklin Street.
Yeah.
So again, the materials are basically board and batten, window openings were modified.
But the front's not board and batten though, Mike, is it?
No.
Is it siding?
No, correct.
Shipload?
Yes, but the rear section was the board and batten, because we're.
Historically, it was board and batten?
Yeah, and that's where we're reapplying that material, getting it back to that characteristic. And that, board and batten is the way board wall buildings are done. When I see a board and batten, board and batten wall, one of the first questions I have, what I do is I look at the windows and see if, if you see the side of the window frame, you know you've got a board wall building. If it's like this, you don't, it's a stud wall. So the minute I walked into that space, I said, this is a board wall building. Okay.
So is that type of construction, is there particular types of wood that predominate? I'm thinking redwood or something like that?
Right, because that's what typically siding and trims are, was all growth redwood. And thus, the wood that's being removed, I mean, if the wood is not destroyed, it generally has a very long useful life.
Yes.
Can last hundreds of years if properly taken care of.
Right.
So that's why it's very feasible that it could be reinstalled. And it is my understanding that.
You offer me sills right outside of town.
I see it in dumpsters all the time.
A lot of the missions stay out of that old redwood as well.
So, and the paint will be kept?
The pink color is owner's choice, it is a reversible issue, paint is reversible, but I think, it seems to me that pink is the preferred color, not that pink. It's got to be carefully chosen.
Yeah.
Okay? So I think that, I don't see any, as far as the color, I mean, why not?
Well nowadays, you can duplicate the color fairly easily.
It's a little hard to know how early, the paint isn't, paint color in and of itself is not a character-defining feature unless the design of the building was very much about that. This was a color for the business, the Casa Rosa, I'm assuming.
But that business was there since the 30s, so.
But it's not.
A little bit of history in that name.
Yes, and, but the business wasn't historic, but the building's historic. So technically, the paint, and paint is reversible. You paint a building every ten, twenty years, whatever, depending on your situation. So, but again, I don't see that the owner has any reason not to use that color. I mean, the community seems to love it, so why not? Right? So, there's no reason to swing upstream on it. Okay, I think I've covered a bunch, I don't know if you've got any other questions, I can obviously answer them.
And then I guess from staff, the only question is, do you guys want to see how close the school parking lot is, or is that not an issue with this?
I don't.
It's a school's lot, it's not public.
It's a school lot, it's not public.
Public lot, yeah, I mean, whatever, I just said, I, like I said, I was.
That's not it.
This is it, it's there, we could throw a measuring tape on there if you want to. It is within 400 feet, though.
It is, right.
It's not a public lot.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a private lot.
It's owned by the school, but.
Yeah, but the public doesn't agree if it's a public or private lot, but if it's not an issue, then I will close this up and let you guys deliberate.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, we need to hear from the person who's doing the appeal.
Yeah, Ellen's next, if she wants to go.
Does she have a card?
Does she have a card?
She provided a letter.
I'm sorry, she does.
Well, it's hard to know, is this on? And I have just three minutes, right?
No.
No, no, that's right.
So I have how long?
All night.
Oh, just like everybody else has already spoken.
Do it.
Well, then, I think I'll just read my letter that I sent to you recently.
We read your letter.
I know, but I'm going to read it to you again. I hope you will carefully consider my appeal of the Historic Resources Board Plan and Commission recommendations regarding Casa Rosa. I hope you will carefully consider my appeal of the Historic Resources Board Plan and Commission recommendations regarding Casa Rosa. The plan as approved will not only impact the three adjoining historic properties, including mine, but allowing such increased density could set a precedent for other historic properties in our downtown National Historic District. Staff has parried the 1.35 housing units allowed by the zoning into four units. The increased density is in exchange for only eight years of so-called affordability. I would point out that the rents allowed are significantly greater than the current rents at the Mission Village Apartments, for real apartments, not just little twenty-by-twenty studios. And three of the Casa Rosa units are only twenty-twenty and provide no parking. This is a short-sighted trade-off. Will this become an Airbnb in eight years? And what will, how will that impact our neighborhood? This property was purchased for only $225,100, less than one-third of the median price of a single-family home in San Juan Bautista. The city does not need to allow such excessive development to make this pencil out. The Casa Rosa property wraps around my national landmark Anza Adobe property, so both the physical construction and the dense uses will adversely affect the historic ambience of my property. Exterior stairs and a fifty-foot-long exterior walkway above the roof will create noise and will intrude upon the privacy of my property. Would you want a fifty-foot-long walkway overlooking your property from only fifteen feet away? These are what I would request, and I think they're reasonable requests. Remove the second-story rear housing unit. Require that the current interior stairs or some other interior stairs to the original second-story unit be incorporated in the design so that there are no outdoor stairs. Require a significantly longer rent protection time for, uh, at least the two bonus units. Seek in-lu parking payments to ameliorate the parking burden. I think the parking analysis was really doing a lot of hand-waving. We do not have public parking lots in San Juan. The two, one is the public street, Washington, and the other, that staff cited, and the other one is owned by the school district and is not a public parking lot, per se. There, I, of course, want to see us protect the remaining historic building fabric, and not just this idea that you can say, oh, I'm gonna take all the boards off, and I'm gonna reapply them, and you end up building something new that is not authentic at all. And this is an eighteen-seventy structure, I think, and it's one that's been critical on our block. So, I think it's very important to monitor the, how the construction goes. Now, with respect to my particular property, I've sent you information, but, um, the Casa Rosa property is a little bit higher than mine, and they're putting almost solid paving in there. So, the drainage from that property is gonna have to go somewhere, and is it gonna go out the driveway to Franklin? I don't know. The current water supply for Casa Rosa diagonals across my property, and, uh, I think that's easily resolved because there's a meter out in front of Casa Rosa that I used to have, and it's abandoned and available to them. The, my sewer line diagonals across my property and then runs down the rear of the Zeller Warracha West property, and, um, out to Fourth Street. So, adding three more dwelling units and a much more intense restaurant bar use than previously is gonna add a lot of burden to that sewer line. And finally, there's a little tree at the corner of my, not a little tree, a big tree. The only tree on the Casa Rosa property is more or less at the corner of where my property abuts that. I'm really concerned about how this is gonna impact future decisions in the downtown. Packing this much stuff in that little thirty-five-by-hundred-and-ten lot, and counting the, the in-fee right-of-way, the ten feet by eighty-five feet or so, eighty-five hundred square, eighty, eight-hundred-and-fifty square feet, is counted for the density, but you can't build on it. It was, it was an access to a garage that existed down there. And, um, so Jim West, when he put the sidewalk in, eliminated the driveway because Charlie wouldn't contribute toward it. So, um, that's how the driveway got blocked off when Jim West put the sidewalk in.
Charlie, the Charlie Shockey?
Yeah, so, anyway, um, I, I do think that there is a serious question of what you're doing to development standards for the whole downtown. We're talking about trying to get leases and purchase parking lots. If you're gonna allow this kind of density bonus on a little inappropriate site, which I believe this is inappropriate for that much density, what's gonna happen behind Daisy's? And what's gonna happen behind the clock shop? And what's gonna happen behind the bank where there are existing so-called parking? It's, it's vacant land. That is gonna get, turn speculators loose once they see what's happened here. And I urge you to please, 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 try, where's my little thing here? Consider making the changes one through six that I provided in my letter to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Emily, Emily, Dan has a question for you.
Is there a number of units you can see going in there?
I'm only asking that you remove the second-story unit and that exterior staircase and the exterior walkway. So, there would be three-
In my rough sense of design, that would mean cutting it from four to two.
No, from four to three. There'd be two little first-floor units.
I'm Dan Vicki Bear. I'm representing the Historical Society tonight. We, we've covered a lot of information tonight, and I don't want to belabor any issues. We had written you a letter, and I, it didn't get into your packet, it's been on the Senate Friday. But I used, um, this landscape picture of the downtown. It's the La Casa Rosa, the, um, Hardinas Adobe here, so it's just a, a heavily photographed area. It really embodies the ambiance of our town. And I put one on your, each of your desks. So, I don't, I was going to read it, but I'm not going to at this point. Some of the points that we wanted to make were about the Secretary of the Interior standards, which Mike Arvalia made, which seemed to be, I mean, obviously, they're being addressed, so, um, as long as they're adhered to. Um, Mike Arvalia also came and represented the owner of the old brewery. So, we know that plans can be made, but we know they're not always followed, so. We just wanna be careful that every, that it stays authentic. You know, we don't want it to just look old. It has to be authentic. Not just create a, an image of, of the old, old times. Um, another point we wanted to make was about the exterior stairs and the walkway. I, I can't, um, I don't know how we can reconcile that, and I think that if we eliminate that back unit, the upstairs portion, it will help address that. Um, and I think the interior stairs, though, the ones that are existing now, aren't the original ones, maybe the older ones could be re, rebuilt, because it was always in a, residents above and a commercial business below, so I think we can keep it that way. Keep the interior stairs, perhaps in a different configuration. We think it's too dense and too many housing units. We just have to think not only of La Casa Rosa, but of the whole, um, Third Street Historic District. How would that skyway, skybridge, how would it look? How would it look from the side? How would it look from Emily's backyard? How would it look from Hardinas? I don't, I don't know if it'll be visible from there. I can't really picture it either. I'm surprised Planning Commission didn't ask for any storyboards. I mean, how can you make a decision when you have to, just those tiny little graphics to look at? Anyway, I, I, we encourage you, we urge you to really consider Emily Rensel's considerations. And I think the parking, the in-lu fee, we have to get something for what we're giving up, if we're giving, giving up anything. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Bob Quaid?
Bob Quaid, one-six-zero Lang Street, and I'm, um, representing the Community Business Association tonight. We talked to some of the merchants, not Emily, we didn't talk to her, because she spied this. But, um, the merchants' concerns are, is, yeah, the number of apartments and the parking issue it's going to create. So, that's the only, our biggest concern was, where's, where are they gonna be, everybody's gonna be parking the cars? Hopefully, you know, the, you have to allow for one car per apartment or two for the two-bedroom, but that is a parking. And then the other issue concerned was, some of the merchants was, where are they gonna put all their garbage cans, especially on garbage day? You have a lot of garbage cans with eight units. Is, is there a place on the street where they're gonna be picked up? Are they gonna be picked up on, on Franklin Street or Main Street? Cars parked there, where are they gonna put them all? So.
That sounds like a small point, but that's a big deal.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and where the, where the garbage cans gonna be stored, is there-
On the lot? They've got that alley going towards Franklin.
Yeah, but is, is there a plan to have a storage area for the garbage cans in the plans? I don't know. I haven't seen the plans for that. That's what's the main concern from the, um, Community Business Association.
Cool. Thanks, Bob.
Thanks, Bob.
Emily Rensel?
She already went.
She already swept the scope.
I mean, I always want to speak again, but.
Cara Bach?
Thank you, members of the City Council. Um, I did submit written comments. I've got another copy for you here. I just want to say that I support the project. I'm really happy that somebody is willing to take on the task of putting our historic Casa Rosa back together, but I think the project can be improved. The first thing that I want to mention, I've got a five, my comments, there were five points there. So, the first one has to do with CEQA. The heading says that, that it's categorically exempt from CEQA, but that's not true. It is subject to CEQA, but as long as it meets the Secretary of Interior standards, it gets a pass. And the way to, um, know whether it meets the Secretary of Interior standards is to have an architectural historian do the analysis and prepare a report, because we're not experts, and so they can advise us. And as far as I can tell, they did not analyze under this new project the three units that were not part of the old project. Sec, the standards nine and ten say, determine whether new additions and adjacent or related new construction are sufficiently differentiated from the old and are compatible in massing size, scale, and architectural features to protect the historic integrity of the property and its environment. So, I don't think that analysis was done. Anyway. Really, a, a report should be prepared, in my view. The second point is that the dense design creates a negative impact on the residents who live there, as well as the adjacent neighbors, their enjoyment of their property, as well as the community, the, these parking issues that we've been talking about. So, we've got the three backyard units, the two-bedroom apartment inside the historic structure for a total of four rental units. The second-story stacked unit at the back of the lot should be eliminated, and this is why. The main building has always had interior stairs to access the, the unit upstairs. I think the, this can be put back. The stairs may not themselves be historically significant, but it's the function. You know, the building always had interior stairs up to the second unit. I'm sure the architect can figure out a way to let somebody come in the back door and go upstairs. And then, of course, we've got the exterior staircase on that second unit with that ridiculous walkway, getting up to that second unit, and as you mentioned, you know, it's raining, your, people are clumping up and down these stairs. It's going to impact the residents who live there, as well as, um, the adjacent properties, you know, that, it, it's the noise and the inconvenience and the privacy. Now, many cities are grappling with ADUs and design guidelines.
I don't want to interrupt you, but if you can, we'll wait long-
I'll be very quick.
You're out of time.
Okay, I'm sorry. Uh, the three minutes is really not enough time. But anyway, uh, I know at least one city, they don't allow stairs on adjoining, that face adjoining properties. They don't allow decks, and they have lowered the height from twenty-eight feet to twenty feet to build units on top of garages. And so, you know, a lot of cities are dealing with these design issues. This has the same impact. It looks into the adjacent properties. Okay, let's see. The affordable, eight years for a thirty-five percent bonus, that's really not appropriate.
We've, we've already, you know.
Okay. And then I just want to mention that the developer probably knows this, but there is a twenty percent federal tax, uh, credit that he can use, and a lot of developers do use. It includes costs for engineering and architects. And then, the state of California has just adopted a state historic, uh, tax credit that goes into effect January one of twenty-twenty-one. And then, if you can look at my two, I won't go over them, but one is put the historic building code in the conditions of approval, because there are all kinds of fire regulations in there, and a building inspector should know that the historic building code applies. And then, remove those ugly treated posts that are up against the wall of the building itself. That is not historically accurate. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tony Garaca?
Good evening. Um, I own the property next- And that, and that's where the construction details, the ones that, the plans that you saw today, those are nowhere close to being even ready to what we would use for a construction drawing. There's just not enough details from there. The one thing that you guys saw is, the footprint of what we're building, what we're proposing to build, is exactly what was there. I mean, we're not, with the exception of one foot, I think we went one foot over to make, um, one of, one of the units a little bit bigger. But the footprint from what was there prior to the previous owner knocking it down, now, you could argue whether that was all historical or not, but that footprint that was there is what we're using. And we did that on purpose to not try to reinvent the whole wheel, not the new project, to use what was already approved back in seventeen.
So, back in twenty-seventeen, that footprint that you're using, was that when La Casa Rosa was a restaurant? Those owners, the Shockys, was that their footprint?
No, the, the, what I understand is the Berta's were the people who, who owned the property prior to when I bought it. The, when the Berta's, um, owned it, their plans were to have a large-scale restaurant, um, with the outdoor, I don't know if they had an outdoor patio, but they were gonna use the existing footprint for a, a commercial, big-grade kitchen and storage area, is what they were gonna use. So, the same footprint, with the exception of one foot, was, of what was approved in two thousand and seventeen, is the footprint that we're using. We're just choosing, instead of it being more commercial and a bigger restaurant, um, and storage is to make it into residential units, which any other jurisdiction that I go to always talk to me about how they need the housing. Uh, so we, I actually thought it would be, I mean, I mean, it would be a good thing. I didn't think, uh, it would be, I mean, so combative with, with housing, because there's a, there's a housing shortage, whether we, what affordability is, is an opinion. I think it's expensive as well. But I don't make those, uh, rules, and I know that, I wish I could solve all the housing issues, but I cannot. And I wish there was more affordable housing. That's why I don't have to do a hundred percent affordable here. I could've come in and went to forty- I could have come in and went to 40% and still been able to ask for the same, by one, whatever it is, just by, with 40% concession, but.
I just, you know, I want to thank you for coming here and for making an effort to get La Casa Rosa back to where it was. But I think that, you know, after hearing that Mr., or the company Gavalia, they were involved with a brewery. The brewery does not look like it used to look.
Can I respond to that?
Yeah, I'd like to respond to it too, Mike.
So that worries me, because I, I want to see La Casa Rosa be the way.
Yeah.
Wait a minute. Yeah, want me to do it, Mike, or do you want to?
Let me, let me do my piece of it. Because, okay, so I was hired by, well, and who was the owner? I forgot his name.
Hippolyta hired me, I hired you.
Okay. So they hired us to do a conceptual design for the project. I was never paid for the conceptual design. I had no involvement with that project whatsoever. That's all I did. I did a conceptual design to rehabilitate that building. There was some, it was collapsing. We came up with a very good idea about it, work with it. Never was paid for. They hired someone else to do the project. I had no involvement with that whatsoever.
Okay, thank you.
So, I don't know where you got your information, but it's false, but just to clarify that. I was very unhappy about that. It was a very cool project, it could have been. I saw that it was built, and it seems like it maybe caught up, I don't know, it didn't seem to be occupied, but beyond that, I don't know.
It has.
No, my committee just told you, so Hippolyta hired me to do a rehabilitation on that. I hired you.
Yeah.
You recommended a steel superstructure and then replaced.
It's a board-wall building.
On top of that, right?
Yeah, board-wall building.
And it wasn't long after that, that Hippolyta fired both of us, well, me and then you. And I didn't get paid by him either. And then Roger Grimsley just took the whole thing over.
Yeah.
And he said, you don't have to pay attention to historical standards, you don't have to pay attention to this, you don't have to pay attention to anything. And you and I had nothing to do with that after that point.
It was sad to see what happened, but beyond that, I had no control of it.
That's right.
So just for the record.
Thank you.
And just to defend Mike. Mike is not doing me any favors. I mean, as far as with the historical preservation. I mean, he is a true historian, and I mean, that's what he does, that's his passion. So, I mean, some, you hear some of the stuff that's going on, as far as people, I mean, questioning him or his intentions. I probably chose the hardest architect to work on this project, because I could have went and hired somebody who would have probably, may have bent the rules or maybe not been as strict as Mike. But Mike is, he's passionate about restoring, and he's made it very clear to me about what his expectations are of me. I can't speak for who the brewery was. I can't speak about the Berta's and what they did, or anybody else that builds in this town. What I could do, again, I'm local, so for me, it's, I have an extra level of scrutiny that I would have to abide by. And I don't build shoddy stuff. I mean, I take pride in the stuff that I do. So for those who question Mike, I, Mike is the guy for historic preservation around, so.
Thank you. Does anybody else?
I never managed to disparage Mr. Gavalia. I appreciate it, just being there. I was there. I was confused about changing the color. Are you going to change the color already?
Oh, excuse me.
Bob. Thank you.
Deborah.
Okay, so I, you're getting ready to deliberate. The public's spoken now about this. And one of the issues that was raised mostly by the public was this fourth unit. And the first thing that I want to talk to you, because you've all heard Governor Newsom say that housing is the biggest priority for the state right now. These laws have gone into place which kind of defy logic. And in this instance, there is a density bonus to allow one unit, one extra unit. And then there's an incentive on top of that to allow the other unit. So David didn't do poor math on this. It's actually the way the law is, is putting in place, and he could take it down and show you how he calculated all that for the, to allow four units. But that was what the developer asked for, and that's what the law allows. And David and I had a project in Marina, and it kind of defied logic. And the council couldn't believe it, because in an area where there was only allowed to be four stories, the developer was allowed to put in another story. He wanted another story. And in a huge unit, a huge apartment complex, he didn't have to put in any parking, because those were the two incentives he asked for, and he was allowed due to the amount of affordable housing he was put in. So the council had to approve a extra story with no parking. Just defies logic. It defies logic, but that's the law. And you think the law is bad now and liberal. Well, a new law just went into place January 1, which is even more liberal. So if this project isn't allowed, then a new application could be made under the more liberal law. And so in your deliberation, when you look at this, if you look at the, I believe it's the Planning Commission staff report, it's Attachment 3, and page 10 of 16, has the findings you have to make to deny the density on this project. Okay, so this is the only way that you can say no to the extra density. You can't say no because it looks bad. You can't say no because it's going to overlook into the neighbor's property, unfortunately. The only way you can say no is as set forth on page 10 of 16. So you could say no if the incentive or concession doesn't actually result in an identifiable or actual cost reduction. He says that it does. The developer says he needs this cost reduction in order to build the project. Or B, where there's a specific adverse impact upon public health and safety, and this includes an impact on the physical environment of property that is listed in the California Register of Historical Resources, which is the case here, but you'd have to make that finding to deny the density. Or that the density bonus and the concession here are contrary to state or federal law. So those are the only three ways you can say no to this project. So you need to discuss whether you can make any of those findings to reduce the density. And that's where your decision-making has to lead to right now, whether you can make these findings. And I know you guys haven't really been put in this circumstance often. You know, you can direct staff to come back with findings if they can be made. If you can't really figure it out tonight, we can try, take a stab at it and try. But you see, and David put it in the report, that he did already take a stab at making these findings, and he could not make the findings. So I think maybe what's fair tonight to, you know, if we were going to continue it and go back, you know, you might want to ask where the garbage cans are going to be stored. You might want to question the in-luf fees. I think you have some discretion over the in-luf fees and whether they should be paid or not. You know, I think the problem that David had is the law is different about parking in different places, so it's not really clear that the in-luf fees are due. But that might be a place where you might want to push back. I think that eight-year affordability, that might be an area that you could push back on. But I don't think that you can really ask the developer to redesign based on, to make it less dense. So if you have any questions, let me know, because it's complex.
So the floor plans have to stay the way they are? If we were to ask him to make some adjustments where there's washer-dryer hookups for the apartments, maybe the stackable ones?
So I think the density has to stay the same. So I don't think you can play with the four units unless you can make these findings. You can, I think, the washer-dryer is another thing that you could probably go back and say, can you tell us how that can be done? I think that needs to be done. Same thing with garbage cans.
So is that, that finding that you just made, that we can't mess with the density based on, on the new laws about eliminating downzoning and all that stuff that just passed January 1 of this year?
No, so unfortunately, this is the old law.
Oh, okay.
So the new law is even more liberal.
More liberal, okay.
So.
No, it's known to apply to towns under 5,000.
I don't know that.
So, um, so what do we do?
What about public safety for access for the, our comments for the public?
Well, wait.
If anybody wants to make a public comment, you'll have to come up.
I think we've closed the public comment already.
But we've closed it, right?
You have, but I think, you know, that is one of the findings that you can deny the project on is public safety. But we had a similar issue in Marina. I mean, you have a firehouse right here, and they can spray to a second story. So I think, you know, it'd be hard to make a finding that this was against the health and safety. And if you wanted to do that, I would recommend you that you get the fire chief in to come and talk to that issue, whether it's safe or not.
I think that's what I'd like to do, is have the fire chief come and talk to us about the density. And I don't know if anybody else has any ideas.
Well, I kind of wanted to speak basically to the applicant. I, I still think, I think he's selling San Juan short. If you open up a really good business, and we have three examples in the last year or two years, Eighteenth Barrel, the Japanese restaurant, and Brewery 25, they can really, retail can really do well here. But if you're just going to open up another, excuse my, second-hand store, then it's not going to. It's not necessarily going to be real, real good. So I'm just trying to kind of sell you on San Juan a little bit. And the old restaurant, which I only went to once, because I wasn't a fan of the food, had an interior staircase, and I'm trying to remember how it worked out. That's neither here nor there.
It was in the kitchen.
Oh, okay.
Kitchen you went up.
Oh.
Because I used to be with the announcer for the parade, and I was always up there with Charlie.
So I'm not selling San Juan short by any means. I just know there are vacancies. I don't, if I had a personal choice, I would not have another alcoholic establishment there. I think we already have enough breweries and things of that nature. The sushi store, the sushi restaurant, he's trying to sell his restaurant. I know there are some successful businesses, and I hope they continue to thrive. But I think from a rental perspective, the cost per square foot of what somebody would be willing to pay for commercial in San Juan Batista is right around under $1.50 a square foot. And it's, I mean, it doesn't pencil out a $1.50.
Anac is for sale, really?
What is it? Yeah.
Off topic.
I mean, I don't know if it's, well, now it's public, but I mean.
All right. So let's go back.
Let's move forward.
What, we need to go forward?
Yes.
And.
That's what I heard. So I mean, I don't know if it's on the market, I mean, with a broker or anything, but I've heard that it's.
Okay, well, we're not going to talk about that right now. So we need to go forward.
Point of order.
And I think that what we need to do is table this to next.
Wait, hold on. With all due respect, now's the time for the City Council to deliberate.
I've been asking, and you've been.
I asked him if Anac was for sale, that's the only words I said.
Okay, let's go. He doesn't have anything to say. What do you have to say?
So here's, here are my comments. First of all, thank you, sir, for wanting to invest a large amount of money in the city of San Juan Batista. Thank you especially for being willing to restore one of our landmarks on Third Street. It's an iconic property, and we were all really worried that someone like you might not come around. In particulars, I have no problem with the design, in all respects of it. The skybridge or whatever it is, this detail doesn't show a lot, but I hope that it would be covered, it would meet the architectural vernacular of the rest, board and batten, or whatever it is. The number one issue I have with this concept is parking. I go to, I live on Fifth Street, and I go to Hardin's a lot, like today for lunch. Today I had a party by the Mission. That's on a Tuesday at lunch. Weekends, it's even worse. Parking is a real bad problem. I know that parking downtown is not your problem, but adding one to four to as many as seven or eight cars, we have to be cognizant of that. So if this is going to be tabled and if it comes back, I am 100% going to be looking for in-luf fees for that. Because although you can't solve the parking problem downtown, you can at least contribute to a solution, and that might be a little bit further off from now. But I would be looking for in-luf fees. Those are my comments.
Okay. And what I would like to see, I would like to see the written report from the fire marshal. Maybe the fire marshal can come and make some comments, presentation. And then the other thing that I'd like for you to consider is lowering the rent for it to be really more affordable. Consider that. And then the renderings. We, I am a visual person, and so it's hard for me to imagine, you know, what the project is going to look like. So if you can come up with some better renderings.
So just to answer to that, it's hard to come up with renderings at this point without going through all the details. Because I don't want to come with renderings of what you want it to look like and then not being able to build it when it comes, because it's not functional to be able to do so. The renderings will come, and that was one of the conditions of the Planning Commission, of what it would look like once we have construction drawings approved. Because until we actually have construction drawings approved by the city, I don't know what it's going to look like completely. We have renderings of what we submitted, and there's some detail there. I mean, you get different elevations and, as far as, but the actual detailed documents, there's no way I could incur that cost at this level without knowing if we even have a project going or not. So, I mean, I mean, just being honest with that.
Okay, thank you.
Leslie. I appreciate you coming in and fixing that house. It was amazing. Very disappointing in what happened. I, my concern is, and I know I shouldn't have it, but the second unit, the fourth unit on the second floor. That's all I have. Thank you so much for taking on this project. I appreciate you.
So I'd like to kind of mirror what Dan and Leslie just said. Really thank you for coming and wanting to develop this, and I want you to develop this. In my opinion, the worst thing that can happen to any building is for it to stay vacant for a period of time. It's been vacant for quite a long time. And, you know, and that scares me more than than a few extra cars on Third Street or Fourth Street. Like Dan, I'm really concerned about parking. It was Ed and I, previous city manager, interim city manager, who discussed the parking, and he did the parking survey with Harrison Associates, I believe it was. Because, and this has nothing to do with you, but parking is a problem in San Juan period, you know? And I look at it as a good, you can look at it two ways, it's good and bad. But if you had no businesses, or the businesses are all poorly run, and no one was coming to San Juan, you wouldn't have a parking problem. So in some ways, you can say it's good to have a parking problem, but we have to work on solving it, or at least making it better. So like Dan, I would be looking for some in-luf fees, and that's about it. Thank you.
So now I go forward, and can we table this?
Entertain a motion, but you should continue it to a date certain, probably the next meeting, so that staff doesn't have to renotice this.
Right, okay. So we will table this till next month's meeting?
Actually, you need to do it by motion, I believe.
Oh, okay.
Can I say something?
So just so I understand the process, if we table it, the next meeting is when? And could we table it? Is the question, because the 30 days appeal process. I was just trying to see if, I mean, because I've never been in the appeal process, and I know there's certain procedures. And I mean, if it goes to the next meeting, is that past the 30 days that was waived of the appeal process? And I also would rather have a decision today regardless of what it is. If you guys don't want me to build it, I won't build it. Simple as that. I mean, I'm not going to sit here and, if it's not something the city wants, then obviously I shouldn't build it, if that's how you guys feel. And I feel it's a very good project. The in-luf fees, paying 20-some thousand dollars for three parking spaces is harsh. Again, these are slim margins that we're working on with, I mean, the historical preservation of that property is going to be very expensive.
I wanted to get 30 from it. Walk into the shark tank. No four spaces and 7,300. So it's over 30. So, I mean, I'm prepared to, I'm prepared to vote tonight, up or down.
When is our next meeting? When is our next meeting? And does it exceed his thirty days?
If you can make a deal with the city tonight on those inlet fees, I'm prepared to vote tonight, up or down.
How about if I give you a longer, if we're talking negotiation, and that's, as an attorney, are we okay to talk about?
They're negotiating.
Because some of the stuff that I also heard was about the eight years affordability, and now how that's, some people may have an issue with that. I think as a developer, being biased, full disclosure, putting more fees in place for me to pay now on a project that is going to take time to build, time to fill, a lot of money to get done, and having additional startup costs is a lot. I don't mind upping the time period, which overall will cost me more than thirty thousand that you ask or whatever it is, and having the affordable housing be longer. That way, at least my initial cost, again, the margins are not what you guys think they are. It's very tight. Having a thirty thousand dollar inlet fee at this time, would it be something that I would, if you were to tell me, would you move forward with it? I probably will not, just because of the added cost that it would, it would take. I'm saying, I would, I would, I would sit here and say, if, because again, the argument was affordable housing. And if we're talking about the greater good here, right? If we supply affordable housing at, instead of being eight years, where it's an extended, a longer period of time, where it goes from eight, maybe I add four more years to that, and now we're at twelve years. That's another fifty percent longer than what I was expecting to.
And then what is the part?
That's in exchange for the.
So you'll extend it twelve years, but nothing for parking? Is that what your counter is?
That's my counter. Yeah, that's my counter.
So.
Why don't you talk to an actual housing authority to find out what the actual contracts are?
How about, here's one other thing, is Mike brought to my attention, what if I find a neighbor who may be willing to lease me some of his or her property for four parking spaces or three? Because again, you say four, but we really need three, because the one that's there is already existing. So, I mean, you're a good negotiator, but it's three that we're talking about. What if there's a neighbor, adjoining neighbor, who will allow me to lease his property, his or her property for those three parking spaces?
But your lease might be more than the inlet fee.
It may not, though.
Okay, well.
Right.
Right.
What?
Call me whatever you want. You can call me whatever you want.
Come on.
In all seriousness, if you were able to do a lease for offsite parking that would satisfy the needs of this development, I think that would be huge.
Three parking spaces.
There.
Okay.
You know, the parking isn't that important to me.
It's paramount to me, so you might just have some opinion of that. So I, that would be important to me. But the mayor asked if you want to continue this for a month. Would a month continuance allow you to go do that deal and come back?
So just a little bit more background about the project. I was supposed to come to the planning commission before I even bought the property in part of my due diligence period, to see if it was even something I wanted to pursue. And I was supposed to come under the planning commission in October. It wasn't noticed properly, we then moved it to November, then we ended up having to change it because we didn't have a quorum to December. So I've already been postponing, and you guys talk about the buildings sitting there vacant, and that's the worst thing that could happen. I feel that every time I do come before you guys, or before a body, not you guys, I am getting pushed out. And I would rather just, hey man, stop the bleeding now, one way or another. And if, again, because the truth is, is that I'm the friendly neighbor guy. I'm not the jerk developer from out of town who's just coming in here. And again, if you guys truly feel that you guys are better off with it, if you guys truly feel that you guys are better off with it being the way it is now than what I could propose there, then I would say vote, deny the project. And I would, I would accept that.
Mister, Mister Wright, right?
Far cry, yeah.
We're not trying to turn you away, but this is the first time this has come before this body. And it's very difficult when we have the number of people that are out there that have approached us individually and asked us to help them. And we are like everybody else, and I told you already, we're grateful that you're here wanting to restore our building. We want you to restore our building. But there are just a few issues, and if you could just make some adjustments and wait for us until next month.
I think like the city attorney mentioned to you guys, when she was reading what the conditions of the denial would be, I don't think anything we're talking about, and I'm not talking, I'm not saying it's practical or it's the right thing to do, but based on her description of what the project could be denied, other than the inlet fees, because that's something that you guys could impose, unless you guys felt one of those findings you guys would be able to find, I don't see how it could be denied from, not trying to sound like you guys can't, you guys can do whatever you guys want, but it, based on what she said, it's, unless you guys find the findings, it's not. So postponing it for, postponing it for another month, like I said, I would rather know today.
But she also said that we could postpone it if we asked for where the garbage cans would be put. And I'm not going to go there, I mean, that's not my concern.
That's a valid point, though, I agree. That's a very, I mean, it's something small, but it's a big deal. But I'm sure that's something that, on the building side, when we're submitting our building permits to get approved, that's something that could be conditioned to where, make, I mean, it's probably already a condition in the building permit that we have to supply. I mean, a lot of these things that are issues are already part of the process of what it would take to get the building permit done. So even though we don't know where they're at now, they have to be identified prior to us appointing a building permit.
I need to ask a question to the city attorney now.
Okay.
Is there any additional laws, regulations, or things like the MAP Act that are going to come and bite us in the you-know-where?
So, no, it's, I believe you can continue this to get more information. The appeal process says that the appeal was supposed to be held within thirty days, but that's been waived, and there's no punishment for not having the decision made. But I kind of think that maybe you have some options, though, of adding a condition that says that he'll pay the affordable, I mean, the inlet fee, or get the three parking spots by other means. And if this can't be done, then he comes back to the city council to try to rectify the situation. And that way, you could approve the project tonight and still give the room, if that doesn't work, to work it out in the future.
Okay, so, why don't you move it? Yeah, make a motion, Dan.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Freeman. I hereby make a motion that the appeal in this matter be denied on the following conditions. Number one, that the applicant pay twenty-five thousand dollars in lieu parking fees prior to the issuance of the first building permit, or provide proof to the satisfaction of the city attorney that he has secured a lease for three parking spaces nearby. I'll say I don't want to get into feet. And, number two, that the applicant provide to the satisfaction of city planning a solution for garbage.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in, oh, do we have any discussion about it?
I think we've had enough discussion.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay.
Madam Mayor, could you announce the vote? I didn't quite hear. Under the Brown Act, if it's a, you know, you should actually say who voted what. I didn't quite, I mean, I couldn't hear at the end with.
So Dan made the motion, and Councilman Freeman seconded the motion.
The only thing I'll add on a technicality is you should include a sequo action in your motion, either finding it exempt or finding it.
And it actually should be prior to, so that's, that would be the first thing.
Just, just for procedural purposes, you should go through the order in which they're listed. You should approve or deny the appeal, find the project exempt from sequo or not, and then approve or deny the project.
Okay, and I'm prepared to restate the motion. Madam Mayor, I hereby move that the appeal in this matter be denied based upon the findings and conclusions contained in the staff report. I also move that the project be deemed categorically exempt under sequo based upon the testimony and the evidence that we have presented to us this evening. And this is conditioned upon two things. Number one, that the applicant pay to the city of San Juan Batista the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars in lieu parking fees prior to the issuance of the first building permit, or provide to the satisfaction of the city attorney that the applicant has secured a long-term lease for three parking spaces plus five to the subject development. And number two, that the applicant provide to the satisfaction of the city planning department that he has set forth a solution for the collection of garbage in or around the subject property, to be approved by staff.
So you missed adopting the resolutions, I think. As long as, there's three resolutions attached. You don't have to restate it, but.
And then finally, sorry to interrupt, but if I could, Madam Mayor, just for clarification of writing this condition, is there a limit on the lease time of the parking spaces? Or is it in perpetuity for the entire development?
I thought of that, and I purposely left that out. Because at first I had ten years, twenty years, I don't know. I don't have to answer that.
I asked of that, because I want to make sure that what I commit to is something that's going to be there. I don't, I can't, I'm not, I'm not going to lie to you and tell you I got something if I don't have it. I just don't know, I just don't know how much time. I can't go to the owner and tell him I want this for life.
No, right, no, of course not.
I mean, so, I mean, I need to.
Ten years?
Ten years.
Ten years?
Ten years. Ten years.
It's a number, ten years.
Five years.
Ten.
Five.
Five years?
Five years. If I still have to find, I don't have these. I mean, that's the truth, I have to go try to find them.
So if ten.
So, the reason, Ryan did ask, but the reason I'm asking is if you, if you look over the conditions, generally the way I write them is prior to issuance of a building permit, the owner, applicant, developer shall do blank. So this draft condition would start with that, and it would be, one, either pay the inlet fee of twenty-five thousand dollars, or two, lease three parking spaces for whatever term it is, and then identify the trash enclosure space. And the reason I'm asking is if that's spelled out in the conditions in three, four, five, ten, twenty years, there's no question as to what this body intended. Otherwise, Ryan could sell it, a new, you know, or somebody could buy it, and they're like, well, that was intended for three and a half years, and now I can't lease the spaces. What do you do with these units?
You know what, let's just do ten years. Anyone that's willing to lease you five is going to be more than due.
What if they want to sell?
Exactly.
What if they want to sell their property? Not only worried about what I do with my property, but what if they sell, want to sell.
Then they pass it on to the next one.
You're already charging me more than the fees for doing this.
We've got a motion on the table.
Ten years.
All right, let's just do thoughtful. Who says ten years?
I'll go five.
Five?
I go five.
I'll go five. So five.
Okay, so we have a motion by Dan DeBries. Councilman Dan DeBries made a motion, and are we going to have a second?
I'll second it again, yes.
And the second was from Councilman Freeman. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Respond by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay.
Thank you.
Just to put it on the record, the motion carries five unanimous votes. So we should announce it, yeah.
Five. All right. So now we go on to action items? I know. Okay. Item A, adopt resolution changing signature responsibilities on city bank accounts.
Thank you, Mayor Edge. The matter before you is more of a housekeeping item. It's tradition for the mayor to be a signator on our checks. And this is simply a request to add yourself, Mayor Edge, as signer on the city checks. And with approval, we will adopt the attached resolution and bring in the signature cards and make such changes with the bank to give you that authority.
Welcome to the club.
Welcome to our club.
Councilman Flores made a motion to approve the changing of the signature responsibilities. Second it by.
Public comment?
Oh, public comment. I think everybody wants to go home.
Okay, sorry.
Okay, no comment?
Let me drag him out.
Okay, so we have a second by Councilman Freeman.
Call for the question.
Any questions, comments? Okay, so all those in favor respond by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Mayor's formation of ad hoc committee for reviewing strategic plan committee membership bylaws. And I think, was this, we moved this, didn't we?
No, we combined an earlier item. Four E, we combined it with this. The minutes of the prior meeting are attached to this report, Mayor. The January second meeting minutes are attached to this report.
So Todd's going to report on the minutes, and he's going to report on this item.
Okay, so come on up, Todd.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council and staff, good evening. I'll go and take a shot at this, and definitely Councilmember Freeman and/or the city manager will definitely chime in. I'm just going to go ahead and just do a quick briefing of my minutes from January second. The Strategic Planning Committee did meet on January second, Thursday. It was scheduled to meet at six-thirty PM, but the meeting actually was called to order at seven-thirteen PM, to be precise. It was on record on the attendance that both Madam Mayor and the city manager were there at six-thirty. But the, because of the time lapse, because we didn't have a quorum, that's when they both left. And then the chair of the planning commission showed up and gave us a call with me and the other member who was in attendance, a few other members showed up. We had a quorum, we had a meeting. We made some, you know, discussed the items on the agenda, including an arts policy, and that item was actually not passed, even though it was an action item. And it was discussed that an ad hoc committee be, you know, be created to review bylaws and the functions of the Strategic Planning Committee. That's where we are tonight. I did ask that the members of the Strategic Planning Committee be there in attendance, but I only see maybe a couple of people in the audience, which is fine.
Can I chime in now?
Yeah, go ahead, please.
So on the arts policy, it did not pass because that was the first time we saw it. And I'm not comfortable just doing a quick read in five minutes and saying it's good or bad. You need to read it, you need to read it again, and then you need to think about it, and then come back. And so I'm hoping it'll come back next month, if there is a next month, and we'll do it.
Proceed.
Sorry, this has been going on for that, the arts policy, that's been going on for a couple of years now, hasn't it?
No, no, not bringing firm policies to the board.
Let, excuse me, let's let Todd finish with his report.
I pretty much, that pretty much concludes my presentation. There's been, you know, some things happening with the Strategic Planning Committee, including dwindling membership that we'd like to address, and also reexamining the role of the Strategic Planning Committee as a whole in terms of like membership, how they're appointed, how they're brought on, and so forth. And that's why I think what we're here tonight to do, to really address that issue tonight. That's pretty much all I have tonight for me, unless you have any questions for me or city staff.
No, but would it make sense to table this and get the ad hoc committee started? Just to reevaluate, regroup, because there have been people leaving, and just not have a meeting for the month of February until we can all get together.
So Mayor, later in the agenda, we're going to talk about our strategic planning workshop on February fifteenth. And the role of the Strategic Planning Committee could be reviewed by the community and the council together at the same time. Meanwhile, if you appoint members to review the bylaws, then we can establish firm bylaws for memberships so that new members know how long they're serving, we know how many members will make up a quorum, we'll have better definitions moving forward. So I agree, just my personal opinion, that maybe putting a moratorium for a month and allowing the city council and planning. and allowing the city council and planning and strategic committee to work together and talk about this further in more detail on the 15th of February might be the best move forward at this point.
That's a Saturday?
Yes, Saturday, Monday, 9 to 12.
So we need a motion?
Public comment?
To...
Yeah, the public comment.
Or public comment. Thank you, Chris.
I'd like to make a comment.
Okay. Come on up.
Thank you.
So I served on the Strategic Planning Commission or Committee when your husband started it, or asked that it be restarted. John has served for a long time on the, on it with the group. I think fundamentally, you need to decide what you want and give them some direction. They have had absolutely no direction for years. And so it's, there's just a, there's a major disconnect there. So that, amongst you guys, you need to decide what or if you want anything from them, and then move forward. That's all I, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, but also the goal of appointing an ad hoc committee.
Rachel.
I also served on the original strategic plan. And my suggestion for the ad hoc committee, or to look into what you want from the strategic plan, my suggestion is that you ask the chair of each subcommittee. I think there's five subcommittees in the strategic plan that were originally made, and each one had a chair. And I would say that you would get a good perspective of what they've done and what they think, you know, should go on. I know that one particular member was really the mainstay of it all, was Shawna Freels. And she really, she chaired two committees, and those were the most productive committees that, of the plan. So I would suggest that it might be a little bigger, you know, for an ad hoc committee, but I think that you would get good historical and, and perspective ideas about it.
Thank you, Rachel.
Mayors, members of the council, I'm Beverly Meamber. I'm on the Strategic Plan Committee. I was in an original one at the time, and you've seen a list, I think, of the original people. And there were various segments that were represented. I was actually appointed to the Strategic Plan Committee by Councilmember Edge, Rick Edge, at that time. John's been there since the beginning. Rachel, Chris, all Chris and I ever wanted was someplace for, for visitors to come. And we, we did accomplish that. They've, they've done some great things, but it is, it's, it really needs to reboot and go back to the matrices. And so I, I would encourage you, I, David Madera, David was also, Vanda was part of it. So it was a, was a, the makeup was different, but that's when the council was involved. And then all of a sudden, people just started coming, and their name would be brought forward to council for approval, but they were not appointed by you. So I, I'm excited to see the ad hoc. I, I didn't want to give it up. So I'm glad that, to see that you are looking at an ad hoc committee. Because it, it has great potential, and it did in the beginning. Thank you.
Thank you, Beverly.
It's ebbed and flowed. It's had ups and downs, so just, just like anything else.
Yeah. So, well, does anybody else have anything else to say? So do we have a motion to, go ahead and...
Did you have a recommendation, Mayor, for the ad hoc committee? Did you consider members?
Well, I know I wanted to be on it. And Sessar, I think you had said you wanted to be on it. And I don't know about anybody else.
And the report asked that I be on it.
What was that?
The prior reports that the council received recommended the city manager, so...
Okay, yeah, so you're on it. And then I guess we could get together and, and call individuals?
Sure, that could be part of our process.
I think it was Rachel that suggested that.
Right, and Shawna, by the way, Shawna did resign, but I'm sure she'd be happy to debrief and, and share her thoughts with us.
Okay.
We'll take care of that on the 15th, right?
Yeah.
So, do we have a motion to carry that on?
Do we need one, yeah?
It's an action item.
You need a motion to appoint yourself and Sessar to the ad hoc committee and to move forward from there.
So do you want to make the motion?
Sure, I'll make a motion. That, that Don, myself, and I guess you, being part of that ad hoc committee.
Does somebody want to second that?
I'll second.
Okay, so we have a motion made by Commissioner Flores and...
Councilman.
Councilman, sorry. And, second by Jordan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. And the next report, Mayor, is for you regarding appointments and any changes that you may want
Oh, yes.
To the local regional commissions and committees.
Yes.
And the list is provided in the staff report?
Let's see, what number is this? 6C. I, I took the liberty of calling everybody and asking what they would like to... I don't know what I did with that.
Then why?
Do you have a copy that has the yellow?
That matrix?
I, I moved everything around. But...
I sought this afternoon when we met, Mayor.
I know, I, I had it.
She had notes on the list.
See, I have a folder, maybe it's in here. Sorry, guys.
But she has her notes on it?
I have. That's all right. I think I can remember. So, the only change I, changes that I made was on LAFCO, Sessar is going to stay. Sessar Flores will stay, and then Dan, you'll be the backup. Ambag, John Freeman will, you'll continue going to those meetings, and Leslie will be your backup. On COG, Sessar and I are going to switch. He's going to be my backup, and I'm going to go to the, the meetings. On the Water Source Resource Association, Leslie is going to take that over, and John, you're going to be the backup. West Nile Virus.
You're on it.
I'm on it.
You're on it, yes.
You're on it.
I'm, I don't think I've ever gotten into a meeting.
Nor have you gotten the virus, right.
And then, the Integrated Waste Management. Did I leave you that, on that, John? Or did you say?
I think you did.
Okay.
And since, since it doesn't really meet very often, Salima and I'll figure that out sometime soon.
Okay. And intergover, intergovernmental committee? I think Leslie, you were going to be going to those? And, and then John, you were going to be the backup?
Well, not quite. That's the, so if Leslie wants to be on both, she has to take a pick.
Yeah, because that interferes, that interferes with the...
It meets at the same time as the Water Resource.
Oh, that's right, okay. So we were going to keep it that way?
Yes, yes.
Yes, okay, all right.
Unless she can meet in two places at once.
There's the Ad hoc Committee for Parking. I'm on that, and then I guess, Leslie, I didn't realize that you were on that too, also. Okay, and then Ad hoc Committee for Sheriff Contract. Dan DeBries, you're on that, and then I'm backup. And then Ad hoc Committee for Cannabis. Dan DeBries, you're on that committee, and John Freeman is, is backup.
We're both on that committee, right?
We're both on it.
They're both on it.
Well, you're both on it, okay. So, Investment Advisory Committee, Dan DeBries, you are on that. And then San Benito Homeless Planning Group, Sessar is going to take that over. And I'll be backup. And then Monterey, San Benito County Continuum of Care Leadership, that goes with the homeless. So Sessar, you're doing that.
Where's the homeless? Oh, okay.
And then Monterey Bay Community Power Authority, John Freeman and Leslie, your backup. And then Area Agency on Aging, I'm going to stay on that. And I think Sessar, you were going to be my backup.
Okay.
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 And that's it.
It will change, but probably not for six months.
So...
So we can still call it.
I make a motion that we accept the changes.
Motion made by Sessar Flores and seconded by Dan DeBries. Thank you, guys. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Now we're on item E, approved resolution adopting cannabis tax rate.
First, we're on D, Mayor, I'm sorry.
D.
Sorry.
Mid-year budget amendment.
Oh, sorry.
I'll make it quick.
You worked hard on it.
I worked hard on it, but that's okay. And I worked hard on it because this is the first time I've had a chance to touch the budget and review it and become familiar with it. And so in our staff report, we included five critical questions about the status of the city's budget. Are costs being managed? Are there areas of concern, are there savings? Are there revenues experiencing negative trend that the city needs to be alerted to? Will there be deficiencies? And do the three major fund balances, general fund, water and sewer enterprise funds, have growing fund balances or declining fund balances? Can the city afford a few adjustments or one-time expenses in light of these facts? And how will the city use fund balances in respect to the reserve policy? So we have reviewed, CPA Wendy Cummings and I have gone through every line item in the budget, and, and a few assumptions are made that there will be savings. As, as mentioned, the deputy city manager position was not filled. Code enforcement came on board in October. So there is some wiggle room of approximately $192,000 in, in the general fund, and, and other money is available in the water enterprise and sewer enterprise fund. So in respect, costs are being managed. There are not any immediate areas of concern, and there are savings. So to answer those three critical questions. The city's reserve policy provides three options. One is to reduce debt, another is to increase reserve amounts, or to find one-time expenses in light of the fact that it's a one-time savings. So what staff is proposing in the form of a resolution is that $86,622 be used of the $190,000 general fund for some special one-time projects. And $50,000 of that is for two studies that are, I'm going to outline in the next staff report. One is a organizational review of the city and a projection of our general fund health and how to keep it healthy, how to preserve our general fund. I call it resiliency. And also the same is true for the water and sewer fund. So the organization is referred to as CityGate. It's, it's operated by retired city managers and finance directors, and they've submitted a proposal, which I've provided to the city council, which is part of the strategic planning and a subsequent item on your agenda. So that's the majority of the $50,000 that, that I'm seeking the council consider, and the balance of that is to help pay for other miscellaneous costs. The resolution has footnotes A through J, if you can read them. I'll be happy to read them if you like. They're there. And then the revenues and, and the benefits there are also outlined. And so with that, I would move that the council consider and approve the attached resolution, making a few adjustments necessary between now and, and June 30, and then allocating the rest for reserves to increase our reserve funds, so...
So I thought that the water master plan that we're in the middle of right now was including a financial analysis on rates for both sewer and water. Is that correct?
That is correct, and...
So I wouldn't want to double these other CityGate people up. That would appear to be duplicative of time, effort, and funds, which I don't particularly care for that much.
Right, a good question, Councilmember. In speaking with retired public works director Carl Bjarke, asking him if that review would be beneficial, he said yes, because his study was the immediate status of those two funds, where this would be able to project and absorb and consider rates. So he liked the idea of having a higher level review of it. And, and it is a cost not to exceed. So it's a time and materials agreement that's proposed later in the agenda. So if there's duplicative, then they won't be duplicated. Those costs simply won't be incurred.
Okay.
Okay.
Emily Rendell?
I'll be very brief. I've been participating on the walking trail subcommittee of the Strategic Planning Committee. And as you know, we've put in a kiosk and produced brochures and plaques and QR codes and all that stuff. And we have pretty much run out of the little brochures. And we met last Saturday, and so I'm speaking a little out of turn here, but we had decided that Shawna was going to approach the city manager about mid-year budget amendment. But I see you have it on your agenda tonight, and if we wait to talk to you, we're going to be too late. And I know that we would like to see about $2,000 for producing brochures for, through June of this year. And even a portion of that would be helpful to that committee. But, so I, it was not what we decided to do at the last meeting, but I think people weren't aware of the timing of this mid-year budget review. So I just want to bring it to your attention that we're, we're out of phase for the grants like from the community foundation, and so we need money for the brochures. Thank you.
Thank you, Emily.
So do we talk about that now, or do we just put it in?
It's not an action item. It's not an action item.
Yes, it's an action item.
It's an action item, but Don, you and I talked about the, the procedure that we're going to implement.
So, so the, the $2,000 is pretty affordable and can be absorbed within our existing budget. I was looking for larger dollar amounts so that we balance at the year-end. So $2,000 is not a very significant amount of money, and we can find that either in the city manager or the general government budget.
So we can vote on that tonight?
So, so I would not recommend a change, but I would recommend that we buy the brochures. The, the $2,000 request is, is not significant enough to change the resolution.
And so I, I would like to take this time to add that that's a perfect example of a huge success that the Strategic Planning Committee has had. And walking, I see people walking around town on Saturdays and Sundays all the time with their phones, the QR codes, and with the brown brochure, which it serves as a map or guide, wayfaring for the people hunting for the QR codes. And it's, it's a big plus for our tourism.
It is. Agreed.
It's, it's phenomenal, and therefore I feel badly even asking this, but $2,000 for brochures, how many you can have printed, Emily? Because they're, they're one color. Two million?
They're like 17 by, they're like 11 by 17.
I'm going off the top of my head. I think that, I think we printed up enough for half a year for that. We've, we've, we've handed out 15,000 of them so far. So they've, they've been going out the door like hotcakes, and...
So half a year is 15,000?
No, no, no. I think it's 10,000 a year, 5,000 for half a year. And I think 5,000 would be about $2,000, but I'm not sure. We also have a couple of plaque carryovers, so I'm not sure what number's in my head. But we had several people from Phase 1 plaques who decided they would take a plaque after all, and those are like $600 or $700 each, so I don't know exactly what it's...
I don't think it's going to cost $2,000 to print 5,000 brochures. But if you have something left over, can you keep it on hand for other walking tour expenses?
Well, we have these plaques that are outstanding, that we're going to try to get people to fund, but we may have to contribute toward that, so... So, and there's the maintenance of the website and so forth.
I do have a creative suggestion that accomplishes the same thing. The council set aside money for the 150th anniversary, and we have about a $3,000 balance left in that account. If it's the council's will, we could contribute that or consider that amount for the historical society or for their goals in the next six months without having to change the budget.
So, providing that nobody else was earmarking that money for something else?
Yeah, can't spend it more than once. But yeah, I'm sure that the Walking Trail Committee would be delighted if that were the solution.
That's probably what Shawna was thinking.
Because we were calculating up all the sort of postponed things that need to be done, and the brochures are the most immediate. And, but there are other things, so that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you, Emily. Thanks. Okay. So, where were we? We were on D. Mid-year budget, the budget. The fiscal year 2020 budget amendment. So now we-
I make a motion, we accept it as submitted, and the changes-
Okay. So, a motion is made by Cesar Flores. Do I have a second? A second by Leslie Jordan. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, now we go to item E, approved resolution adopting cannabis tax rate.
Did Victor have to go home? There he is. Awesome.
Happy Wednesday.
Thank you for speaking, and Victor.
Not quite.
Thank you. Not quite, right. At this rate, I think you folks are at, what, about 50 cents an hour for your compensation?
We don't get paid. We're volunteers. Hollister gets paid, we don't.
Never mind. Hey, that was only 200 bucks. Honorable Mayor members of the council, Victor Gomez with Pinnacle Strategy here, providing you really our, excuse me, really our last step so we can start accepting applications for cannabis operations in the city of San Juan Batista. As you know, back in June of 2018, the ad hoc committee that then consisted of Chris and Dan moved an ordinance forward that was eventually adopted in that year of 2018. Recently, we went back and approved the rules and regulations and operating procedures application for applicants to start applying for the city, the city's cannabis program. And now, really, as your last step, is preparing the tax rates for your operators. So, in November of 2018, November 6, 2018, San Juan Batista voters passed Measure I, the cannabis tax, at a 65% to 35% margin, which is fairly common for cannabis taxes ranging around there. In those taxes, the voters essentially had an opportunity to vote yes or no on the cannabis taxes or cannabis tax ranges. Really, the reason that the council decided to go that route is to allow you, at your discretion, at any given meeting through resolution, to set your tax rate for that given year. You don't have CPI worked in, so you don't, you're not going to see any increases, but on an annual basis or maybe biannual basis, you could always revisit your tax rates. I'll go down the individual taxes really quick that were included in the initiative that was adopted by the voters. Cannabis cultivation tax range between $3 and $12 per square foot. That's canopy foot, so that's the grow area of the operation. 0.5 to 8% for distributors. Those are folks that are moving the product. 2 to 8% for manufacturers, those that are making, you know, chocolates or gummies or whatever it may be. 3 to 10% for retailers. That's your purchasers, right? That's where your customers, it's actually going to be open to consumers. 1 to 5% for testing laboratories. Again, that's for the testing of the product, manufactured product, and also cultivated product, to make sure that it passes state testing standards. 2 to 8% for micro business operators as well. Now, in your staff report, I did include some regional tax rates, just so you could actually have some regional comparisons. I'll let you review those. But as you could see in your draft resolution, we took a fairly moderate approach to this tax proposal. But obviously, it's up to you tonight to either accept, adjust, bring them lower, bring them higher. That's to your discretion through a majority vote. So, I'll review those really quick. Our recommendation for indoor and mixed light cultivation is $5 per square foot. Distributor 4%, manufacturing 5%. And if I could just add, sorry, that's, the percentages are based on gross receipts, right? So, before operation expenses, this is actually what they're charging or making before, you know, before expenses. Retail 5%, laboratory testing 3%, and micro business 5%. So, those are the recommendations that we're bringing to you here tonight. Again, if you want to go to your staff report, we did compare, obviously, San Benito County, they don't allow retail, so you don't really have a comparison there, but they do have, they allow everything else. Hollister allows all operations, Santa Cruz County, Monterey County, and Salinas do as well. So, if there's any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer those questions and certainly entertain any further comments from you folks.
I heard that Monterey County at one time, let's just pick cultivation for ease of conversation, I think they were charging something like $15 a square foot or something like that, and everybody rebelled. I mean, the growers, and I shouldn't say everybody, but the tax rate was obviously too high. So, you are suggesting 5% for us? Is that?
For cultivation?
Yeah.
It would be $5.
Five dollars. Five dollars. Thank you, $5. Do you think that's about the right? I don't know. Has Monterey lowered their cultivation?
They did. They were at $15 a square foot. And that's where they started. They actually had a range adopted that was 15 to $25. Again, Monterey County, and Don is probably fairly familiar with these conversations at least, Monterey County was sort of a trailblazer in the cultivation side of cannabis. So, they set their tax rates, but they were one of the first states. I still think they're actually up there in cannabis cultivation, right behind, right behind Santa Barbara County. I think they're second in the state for cultivating, cultivation of cannabis. So, they're pretty active. But the growers out there did complain quite a bit because of the growing competition in other jurisdictions. When other jurisdictions came on board, they started to see Monterey County operators either cease expansion or actually move to other counties for the lower tax rate. It's a big impact. I mean, if you're cultivating 5,000 square feet, which is a sort of an average size cultivation, indoor cultivation, you're paying 25,000 a year in taxes, right? At $5. Well, you're paying $75,000 in Monterey County, right? So, I mean, for an operator, that's not a very hard decision for them to make, to say, hey, we could uproot and leave and still make up for our investment elsewhere. So Monterey County, the Monterey County Board of Supervisors did adjust the rate to what you have here in front of you, which is $9 a square foot for indoor and $6 for mixed light. They tried to encourage mixed light grows, greenhouse grows in Monterey County.
So, both San Benito County is 5, Hollister is 5, and now Monterey County is 6 or 9, depending on how you look at it? So, what's your recommendation for us then?
Our recommendation is $5 a square foot. But you do, you know, just so you're aware, you could go up to $12 a square foot. That is within your allowed tax rate.
So, we could go in between there if we wanted to, like say $8?
You go anywhere for cultivation, you could go anywhere between 3 and 12. And then, you know, the others fluctuate a bit.
Okay.
And remember, you're pretty limited on cultivation space. I think you have a total in four parcels of, I don't know, roughly 22, 25 acres, something to that effect. So, it's pretty limited. What you're likely going to generate more taxes from is going to be the retail side of the operations. That's more dependent on the volume that they, you know, that they bring in. But no matter what, you're likely going to see more taxes driven from retail than cultivation, considering the footprint of the allowable zoning.
You need a motion?
Do we have any public comment? No? Okay. So-
So, I move that we accept the recommendations of our consultant, Victor Gomez.
So, we have a motion-
I second it.
-by Councilman Freeman and seconded by Councilman Flores. So, all those in favor? Those on by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Madam Mayor, if I could, just really quick, I do want to let you know that we are working, I'll be working with Don to work with IT to start building the information for the website for cannabis applicants. We're hoping to be prepared by March 1st, somewhere around there. So, we'll work, obviously diligently to get that going. That way, applicants could pull the application from the website and submit applications as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Victor. So now, we move on to discussion items. Ban on plastic disposable foodware draft ordinance status?
So, I'll quickly run through this. Is Dan still here?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Okay, thanks, Dan.
He's hiding, but he's here.
Checking in with CSMB, they're our partner, and Selena as well, of course, with Recology. I tried to some-
Integrated Waste Management.
I'm sorry, Integrated Waste Management. I'm sorry. Get my players confused sometimes. I brought a summary of feedback we got from the CSMB students, the work that they did and integrated waste management, working closely with them as partners. And it was great to have them come on board, although albeit a little bit late in the semester. We did receive a draft report, a final report, which not quite finalized yet, so I didn't provide it to the city council. They did research as far as learning how to, how we compost in here in our city and the things that are needed to accommodate South Valley Organics and a composting plant. Councilmember Freeman and I had a chance to tour that plant. It's a big operation south of Gilroy. They did interview 20 of 48 businesses and review and recommended several improvements or changes to the draft ordinance. A final meeting at Vertico occurred in the late of the semester, and a draft report was provided January 9. So, in discussion, they did a really good job of defining the context and the impacts of plastics, as we saw in the video that we played. Councilmember De Vries brought it forward to the council. They also reviewed some of the legislation, SB 270 and SB 228, from the state of California as it impacts this policy and in regards to plastic bags, plastic grocery bags. The CSMB students in Recology have to share the distinction between what is compostable and what is biodegradable, and maybe I can, if necessary, get some help here. I have this problem in my own kitchen. When I use, when I've got a piece of cardboard in my hand, I have to ask myself, does this go in the recycle or in the compost? And so, some clarification there. So, what we tried to do with the draft ordinance is go in and make some clarifications in the redline version that I attached. So, more than 17 edits were suggested to the ordinance, and there's probably room for more. But we wanted to bring this forward in draft format to the council because we want to move this policy forward. And hopefully, we can just review this one more time. I don't know if you want to take time tonight to look at all of the details, but I think they've done a thorough job. And also brought to our attention ordinances from Carmel, Pacific Grove, and Monterey, which also have some really strict requirements. But one thing was certain from the survey, and I'll let Dan speak to this if you like, Professor Hernandez, there's room for more outreach. And so, Selena has been working on an FAQ for us that would show businesses, just in simple bullet points, what we're trying to do with the ordinance, banning styrofoam and so forth, and all the intricacies. Because the ordinance is rather legal and technical, and the goal is to convey that in layman's terms to the business owners. But admittedly, there were at least one business owner who wanted nothing to do with this policy. So, there's some work to do. There's a little bit of pushback out there. I don't want to paint this panacea of everyone behind the banned plastic revolution, but there's a lot of businesses that are already volunteering and cooperating, as you know, if you had Hardeens or Don Yester's or even the café. So, there's a lot of work being done now, and all the ordinance will do then will strengthen that and also allow the city to stand up and say, we're the trendsetter and we're setting the example for other local jurisdictions. So, with that, I don't know if the council's had a chance to read through all these fine prints or if Dan wants to say anything.
I'd like to say a few words. I'll be relatively brief, given the time and the thoroughness of your report, Don. Greetings, council members, and Mayor Protem. Protem might get it right, or Mayor?
Yes.
Mayor? Okay. Everything's changed since last time I was here.
Please, Protem.
I apologize. Greetings. I want to just, I'll just give a few words about the survey that the students took, who are, some of whom have graduated. But they decided to survey, I think, there's 48 businesses in San Juan Batista, as far as I know. That's the number they're using for the total. Of those 48, they chose to survey 20 of them, and I think that they were focusing on the establishments that served food and alcoholic beverages. And of the 20 they surveyed, 16 responded, which is actually pretty good, 80% response rate. And they're very persistent. So, I give them a lot of credit for that. I know when one student was not able to get a survey, another one came in and talked to a different person and was able to talk to the right person. And so, that was successful. And just pie charts here, I'll just relay what they pie chart said. Of the 16 responses, when asked about, are you aware of the plastic ban ordinance going to affect January 2020, which is now, about 44% said yes, about 44% said no, and the other 12% said they had limited knowledge of the ban. So, it was kind of split, but a lot of folks didn't really know about it, of those 16. Yet, when they asked them if they thought of transitioning to reusables or BPI-certified compostable items, now BPI is the, kind of the standard that Integrated Waste Management is striving for, as I understand it.
It's our franchise agreement with Recology was accepted in their composting facility is BPI-certified products. It's not a perfect certification, but it is kind of the lead certified composting program that is out there right now.
So, thank you. So, what was positive is of the 16 businesses who responded, 81%, which is probably about 15, 14 or 15 of them, said, yes, we're thinking of transitioning to reusables or BPI-certified. So, they were into that. One said no, and a couple, 12% said they have already transitioned. So, that's happening. And finally, would you like to receive recommendations of distributors that provide cost-efficient and eco-friendly alternatives to plastics? All but one, it looks like, said yes. All but one of the 16. So, there's other four that, who knows? Anyway, so, I'd say there's, seems to be majority support for it. A few folks might be stragglers, but they'll probably come along, given time, I'm guessing, but I can't answer that for sure. So, did you have any questions you would like to ask about that, or is that satisfying?
No, there was one piece I missed, and that was enforcement and fines. And I provided the council with some examples of fine systems used in other cities. We have a fine, we have a resolution, a bail schedule that we control our fines by, so, but it gives the council a general idea. I know that was one concern, enforcement-
Right.
-that we didn't speak to.
And I will say, as Selena mentioned, and you mentioned too, Don, my students also gave feedback on the proposed ordinance to you. So, some of the feedback that Don read was as a result of my students working with Selena and Integrated Waste Management, so, thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay. We move on.
I can use some ideas, but not during the meeting.
Madam Mayor? I do have public comment.
Paul Quinn? Bob. Hi, Bob.
So I'm representing the Community Business Association again. So we interviewed the other 20 businesses that they did talk to.
Oh, good.
No, we, so we sent out, I had, I surveyed the business community, and so we got some results back too, and similar results. We didn't, I don't have the pie chart in there, the chart, but so I have my notes here. But yeah, we got no major objection, you know, and I don't have numbers on how many were for, how many against it, but people were wanting to know about timeframe and what the actual policy was going to be and what education, what you talk about, what education is going to be available for the business owners and, and to what level is plastic going to be banned? Is it, is it just plastic food containers and that type of thing, or is it, is it the garbage bags, you know, the big 30 gallon garbage bags, are they banned, those plastic garbage bags? Are plastic trash cans that the Integrated Waste Dumps are trashing, are those banned now in the city? So yeah, what level of plastic is banned? And how, how is it going to be enforced? Who's going to, is Rich going to be out there checking if people are using plastic?
Checking trash cans?
He'll do it.
He's going to be busy.
If I know him, he'll do it.
And then what about the craft fairs? Are we going, how are we going to enforce it?
Number one with festivals.
Yeah, how are we going to handle it with all the festivals in town, or, you know, are we going to let vendors know upfront that, oh, you can't be serving the beer out of plastic cups anymore?
Yeah. They need to bring their own mugs.
Yeah, so that's what the comments from the other 20 that we surveyed.
Have your thoughts, Rob.
Okay. So where do we go from here?
You know, if there's additional information, the council can provide it to me on a, as it comes to you send an email basis and, and think through it, and we'll work on finalizing the ordinance and bring it back to you in the draft, hopefully a final version in February.
Okay. Good. Well.
Sure. Well, I don't know. Did you close the comment?
Can I? I didn't. Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Natalie. I'm with San Benito County Integrated Waste Management, and I've read the ordinance a few times now. And as it reads, it allows for recyclable plastics in to-go wear. However, it only provide, it only affects to-go wear for food providers and special events, and the single-use plastic bag ban only affects retail establishments. So I think it should be clarified that the single-use, the plastic bag ban should also affect food providers and, sorry, special event. But as far as special events and the things that they're selling, that is currently not part of the ban. And I would also like to clarify the definition of recyclable, because right now it states that anything taken by the hauler is considered recyclable, and currently the franchise agreement allows for plastics one through seven, and really only one, two, and five are getting recycled. Plastic film is also accepted by the hauler, which is also not getting recycled. So yeah, I think there should just be a few more clarifications and stronger language in terms of what we are allowing for plastics and when we want to require compostables. Thank you.
Well, thank you for the information.
Okay. So any other comments?
Just as a point of, as far as food that goes out, the restaurants usually want the plastic bag, so there was a lot of pushback, because if you get Chinese food, then it will drip from the plastic container, and so there, that's typically an area of pushback on, on restricting that.
Okay, now we move on to.
It was just a discussion item, ma'am, so.
Yeah, we're moving on to B, change the municipal code section dealing with driving oversized vehicles on city streets.
So we're going to continue that item.
What was that?
We'd like to continue that item, and Deb can speak to that if you like.
We're going to table that.
We're going to take that into next month?
Table it, I think.
Yeah, table it.
I'm not certain that it's legal to give somebody a ticket without identifying the driver.
Oh, I see.
You recall all of those red light camera lawsuits, and you had to see the person and be able to identify them to give a ticket, so I'm not sure that this is feasible.
Okay, all right. Thank you. All right, so then now we go on to item eight, comments. City council, do you guys have any comments? Let's go home.
I have a comment to the professor as he's walking out. CSMB, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
City working with you.
Well, we really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Okay. So city manager, Mr. Reynolds.
No, ma'am.
Do you have a comment? Any comments?
No, good job tonight. Thank you very much.
City attorney, Ms. Mall. Okay.
Make a motion, readjourn.
And the second?
Second.
Okay. Motion by Cesar Flores and second by Leslie Jordan.
Five hours. Close to it, yes.
Five hours, huh?